There you go.
Now you're on.
Now you're on.
All right. Bye. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Bell's Fall Junior High School. We apologize for our tardiness. So we're having some technical difficulties with the Zoom part. Thank you, Amy, for figuring that out for us. So first up, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Um. First thing I'd like to do is introductions and go around your room. David, start with you, please.
I'm David Clark. I represent Westminster on the Union High School Board.
Priscilla Lambert, I represent Rockingham on the Union Board.
Kelly.
Kelly Ryan, Principal.
Rob Welch, Rockingham.
Darcy Sprague, Crafton.
Lex Sack, Rockingham.
Jason Terry, Rockingham.
Andy Haas, Superintendent.
June Street, Rock, Westminster.
Tanya Athens.
Jamie Staro, Westminster.
Deborah Wright, newly appointed, Rockingham.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so adjustments to the agenda. I know that we have a couple of them. Like to add a nine C if we could policies. We have a couple of policies we have to review that were sent out. Uh, also like to add under after communication of public comment, a five A where Elijah has joined us for a few minutes. He's going to talk about the bonds. And my thought was that he could uh, talk until he needs to leave at seven. And then we could later on down the road, maybe we either do adopt or don't adopt or whatever we decide to do with that. But it's, I'd like to kind of split it up a little bit to kind of get everything in that we can if we could. And I know we have an exact uh, a uh, what's the?
Executive session?
Exactly. That's all right. Thank you.
And if it is, I would like to offer a couple of adjustments when you're ready for them.
I'm ready.
Okay. Uh, the first one is student matter involving staff members. And I will note for uh, the benefit of people who are not board members, that it is a continuing discussion. And which suggests that we place it at the end of the meeting. And the other one is, if you're ready for it. Discussion of personnel or assistant principal and dean of students positions. And I need to make a clarification here, which I think is important. And I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget it. When we are discussing the rationale for adding either or both of these positions for consideration by the board, these hires become board policy matter, which is absolutely within the public's right to know. When we discuss specific candidates to fill either of these positions, this is privileged executive session discussion. And that is my rationale for the executive session. And that is how I draw a distinction between the public's right to know and this board's right to protect individuals who may have involvement based on their consideration.
So David, just to clarify, do you want that before director's comments or after?
I am going to ask the chair, where the chair chooses to place that. I would suggest that it could be done at the end of the meeting. And if there is action taken, we would be coming out of executive session to take that action in open session, which is generally how we have settled executive session discussions that result in action. But certainly we need to discuss the dynamic uh, in our regular board meetings so that the public has opportunity to understand what the recommendations are from building administration and why building administration made those recommendations.
Okay, I think I'd like to leave it executive session before director's comments. This way, if somebody has something additional to say after the executive session, I would give them a chance to speak their mind, so to speak. Any other, June, what do you got?
I'd like to add, Kelly gave us a really good principal's report for the last meeting and she wasn't able to attend. So I'd like to add that to eight D, principal's report.
Let me ask Kelly, are you prepared to talk about that? Or would you rather discuss it at the next meeting, which is just a few weeks away?
Um, I defer, I can speak to it. It sounds like you may have some questions. So I feel totally prepared to answer those. Do you want me to summarize what I included in that report or?
Um, no, I just have some specific questions. Thank you.
Um, okay.
Jason, where was that being added? Because usually it's added under reports.
So June wanted to do it under eight D, unfinished business?
I only did it under unfinished because she had given us the report for the last meeting, but she was unable to attend.
So it's okay, I just, I'm just clarifying where you guys wanted it.
Um, okay, let's, let's do it. Why not?
So where are we doing?
Eight, eight D, please.
C and D?
Eight D.
B. As in David Clark. Anything else, Deb?
Yeah, the one other thing has to do with the executive session piece.
Go on your way.
Which I believe we had worked on prior to my leaving March, some clarity on what we do for executive sessions. Um, I have the one that the municipality uses. And these are all the only exceptions allowed by statute. And I made copies of all of them because we're supposed to declare why we're going into executive session and we're not. And that's inappropriate for the public. So they need to know as we do our work in transparency as the body. I like to pass out these copies because this is double sided. There's two different lists of them. And when, and also the last thing is, if you have more than one reason to go into executive session and it doesn't work under one item, you have to come out of executive session and go back into executive session again with another motion to do that. That's awkward considering you have to go into the bubble to do executives, everything come back out. So that's, if something is that important, that's what we have to do. You can't combine them into one and put them into an executive session to discuss multiple topics. So we have to be separate about it. But I don't know if I have enough copies or not, but.
Do you feel that we did, did we do it right, right, what David said?
Uh, what, what David said is whether he's at the end, whether or not this is going to be um, in executive session. It's like, if you have multiple things, this could be a concern for having to come out and do another motion for another executive session. So again, the running back and forth, different rooms with the Zoom is difficult.
Okay.
This is actually considered.
Anybody else? Harry None, um, all right, we have a communication and public comments. Anything out there in Zoom land or the audience?
Would be the time for Eli.
Uh, Harry None, uh, Eli, I'm sorry, I don't know your, your last name. So you're up until, until seven. What I was hoping to do is, um, you know, maybe cut you off about five of in case somebody has questions or whatever time allows.
Okay, well, I know, I mean, I, I'm, it's nice to meet you all. My name is Eli Emerson. I'm a, an attorney, uh, working at Premier Piper Eggleston in Kramer. I worked with Paul Giuliani for a long time and work in the municipal finance world. You, the board had been considering participating and so the, the bond bank basically has two times a year where you can issue bonds with them. Uh, ones in the summer, ones in the, in the winter. And so I think you were considering participating in the summer pool, um, but decided not to, which is completely fine. I think it is a valid question to think about when is the right time to borrow money? Because you can't just borrow money and have it sit in the bank account for years. So I think that's a good discussion to continue having. The only reason, um, there are a couple of things that I thought that the board should adopt regardless of when you guys actually borrow the money. Um, one is called a validation resolution. And what that means is it's really just correcting a couple of procedural fault, uh, uh, faults or errors in the way that the, the bond vote was warned. Um, it is very tricky. I recommend in the future that you have bond counsel help you with the drafting of the, of the warning and, and the notice requirements for a bond vote. But either way, um, it's a little bit, it's quite a bit more stringent than just a regular meeting. Um, so what the validation resolution does is it basically allows the school board, um, after there was a positive vote, if two thirds of the school board vote to validate um, that vote that took place at town meeting or at the annual meeting day, um, then it is validated. Um, the reason, the significance of that is then I can issue what's called a preliminary opinion, which will tell any lender, whether it's the bond bank or a private bank or anybody else, that you guys have met all the requirements for borrowing the money. So if you decided you'd rather, rather than go to the bond bank, you wanted to talk to a commercial bank about interim financing, you could take this letter, the preliminary opinion and say, here's the, our bond banks, our bond lawyers, um, opinion that our, the, the vote was valid and, and were authorized as a school board to borrow the money. So that's, if it, that's one thing um, that I would suggest you adopt. I, you have it in front of you now. I see no reason why you, you wouldn't do it today, but certainly sometime in the near future. So I can produce that preliminary opinion. And then um, the other thing, um, I believe there are two same document. Uh, it's called the Declaration of Official Intent. And I won't get into the sort of the tax rules associated with this. But basically, if, if you, if you want the ability, um, in the future, if you borrow money to pay yourself back for money you spent on these particular projects, you have to declare now that you're going to do that. So say you spent um, uh, district funds advancing either of these projects. And at some point in the future, you wanted to reimburse yourself or pay yourself back with, with proceeds from the bonds or no, or whatever you used to borrow. In order to do that, you need to declare now that you're going to do that. It doesn't require you to borrow money. It doesn't require you to spend money, but it puts in place the ability to reimburse yourself later if you do decide to spend district funds on these projects. So those are the, there's three documents. Two of them are the same document, just ones for the roof and ones for the parking lot. Um, and then the other is the validation resolution. I would just suggest doing those now. Um, doesn't commit you to borrowing money at any particular time, but it definitely puts you in a position to sort of act quickly if you do decide at some point to do that. So I think that's all I, I had um, hoped to cover in this particular meeting. I realize you guys will continue having discussions about when's the right time to borrow the money for these projects.
Yeah. Uh, to open it up to questions, if you have time.
Yeah.
Questions for Eli? Deb?
I have a question on the section of Declaration of Official Intent.
Yeah.
Section, it has a 60 day limitation on it. Can you explain that further?
Um, the limitation is not that it only, there is a limitation on it, but that 60 day language says, so if you were to sign this Declaration of Official Intent today, you could go back 60 days from today and include any payments you made for the project and reimburse them. So essentially, you know, once you sign this, it, it gives you some ability to go back and include some payments that you made. Um, you can only go back 60 days from the date you sign the declaration. So if you guys had, had, if you sign this today, but you had say, you know, paid a consultant $10,000 in uh, early June, uh, you would be able to use bond proceeds eventually, whenever you borrow the money to pay yourselves back that $10,000. So that's what that 60 days means. There is, um, generally, there's essentially a, um, this declaration will last for about three years. I mean, there's some nuance to that, but essentially you can go out, um, any, any, any uh, expenses you pay from district funds for the next three years, you would be able to reimburse those with bond proceeds. So that's the time period. So the 60 days is looking back. Going forward, it's about three years that you have until this declaration would expire.
Thank you, Deb. So that's in section three, the 18 months or at, at the most.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, go ahead.
Uh, Eli, can you, can you give us a sense of what the rate is now? I know, you know, you can't give a specific number rates are changing every day. But ballpark, what's the muni rate that we would be looking at now?
Uh, you know, I haven't, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what the bond bank rate was. I haven't seen, I don't know, maybe if, if Jim possibly got some indication of what rate they were going to offer, he might be in a better position to say, I've seen short term borrowing, um, uh, you know, for, in the range of a year to five years, being in the, the low five, uh, five percent, uh, five percent to high four percent. But I think the bond bank would be a little bit lower than that. Traditionally, they're a little bit lower than those short term commercial bank notes. But if that's information you want and Jim doesn't have it, I can try to look it up, but.
Right? Jim, did you just pop on there?
Yeah, I will say, the typical, it's three to four percent in that range.
Any other questions for Eli? This side of the room, nothing? Okay. Um, Eli, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So you thought that by us not signing it immediately was not necessarily a bad thing and we could wait. And I want to make sure I heard you say that, um, so even if we don't sign it today, we still have three years to sign it if we, if we want to. Is that correct or am I wrong or?
So just to be clear, um, let's, I just want to put a, you know, a cap on the conversation about the Declaration of Official Intent. That really only has to do with whether or not you can reimburse your, if you make payments for the project now from district funds, whether or not you can reimburse yourself uh, later on when you do borrow money for the project. So that's what I'm suggesting you guys adopt today is just to put that in place so you have the ability to reimburse yourself. So the question that I, that I was addressing was, um, my understanding is that, um, you guys weren't quite sure that you wanted to borrow the money, that this was the right time. Um, that, that's important because, um, under federal tax rules, you do have an obligation to start spending the, the bond proceeds in a short timeframe. For example, you have to have committed five percent of the funds within the first six months. Um, so when you do borrow the money, like you would have in this instance from the bond bank, the clock does start ticking to be able to use the money. You can't just leave it in a bank account and gain interest on it. Um, that's just, it's arbitrage and, and it's not allowed under the federal tax rules. So what I'm suggesting is, um, if you weren't sure you were going to move forward with a project, then it doesn't make sense to issue the bonds, um, without sort of a clear plan as to when you were going to move forward with the projects. Um, if you want to use the bond bank though, you only have two opportunities during the entire year, usually in um, late summer and then in late winter. So you've missed the opportunity to do the late summer bond bank issuance. So your next opportunity would to be able, would to borrow the money. I think it's usually you receive the funds in March. And there's an application process that starts in December and then there's a lot of documentation. Uh, but then you'd actually receive the bond proceeds in March. So maybe that's better timing. Uh, what you can also do if you're not really comfortable with the bond bank's timing is you can do what's called a bond anticipation note, which means that you know it's temporary financing. You know, it may be for a year, it may be for two years. But it at least, um, gives you some short term flexibility. I mean, you can always, those, that would be with a commercial bank. Um, and they would lend to you whenever. So if you decided October was the right time, you could go and get a bond anticipation note uh, with a bank to get the funds to start the projects. And then you could then replace it later with the bond bank bonds, um, when they're doing their, you know, their issuance twice a year. So that's really what I was talking about was just, um, the timing of when you borrow the money. Uh, it's important. So you want to try to match it up with when you actually think you're going to start spending the money on the projects.
Thank you. So, uh, Priscilla.
Yeah, I, I just have one question for clarification. Because, um, if we ended up not starting the project till three years from now and we pass this, this, um, Declaration of Official Intent, then our timeframe for, for being reimbursed would be up almost immediately, right? So we want to wait till closer to the project.
No, um, I wouldn't think of it that way. This declaration means that if you can start spending money on the project now, the district's own money. And if within the next three years, you end up borrowing money for the projects, you would be able to reimburse yourself. If for some reason you didn't borrow, you didn't end up borrowing the money again for another four years, then you just want to do another Declaration of Official Intent, possibly two or three years down the road, just to give yourself the possibility. So you gotta think of like that, it's like an expiration date to this Declaration of Official Intent. At some point it will expire if you don't actually borrow the money. So you're just going to want to do a new declaration once it expires.
But if we went ahead and borrowed the money, thinking it was going to start and then it didn't start for a long time because we don't know when it's going to start. We only have three years to get money back out of it. So we wouldn't be able to get that money back out of it if we, if we did the, too soon.
To me, that sounds like that's a different problem. So if you borrowed the money now, you wouldn't, you wouldn't worry about reimbursing yourself because you have the money there to spend on, you have the borrowed funds to spend on the project. This Declaration of Official Intent is really just for when you guys spend district money, money in the general fund on the project. At some point, because it's a project cost, you will want to reimburse yourself back into the general fund from the bond proceeds. And in order to be able to do that, you need to declare now through this Declaration of Official Intent, that that's what you intend to do that in the future. The problem you're talking about is if you actually borrow the money now and it's just sitting there in your bank account accruing interest, that could also be a problem if you realize you're not going to spend the money from the bonds for another two or three years, then you need to start worrying about arbitrage. So, um, I agree, if you're not ready to start spending money on the project, you shouldn't be borrowing money for the project or you're going to run into arbitrage concerns.
Thank you. Rob?
Uh, Eli, this message is maybe for, questions for you and or Jim, but as a board and community, do we know what that date is in the winter? So that this board can be aware of looking backwards and making sure that we have the proper documentation and, and process to when we vote on this. Do you guys have that date or is it not a drop dead date?
It's, it's usually, it, it, it floats around a little bit. Usually the application process starts in December. So, you know, applications are due by the end of December. And then, um, you know, they'll give you some response to your application in January. They'll set up who's, who's participating. And then February is really where we start drafting the documents and then it would close in March, usually around mid March is when it closes and you'd get the bond proceeds. But, you know, if you were interested in having funds available for the projects in March, then you'd want to start that application process in December.
They notice, right? They, they issue a notice that they're open, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know if they so much send a notice out, but it's certainly published on their website, their schedule for when they start accepting applications. Um, it's, it's very open. Uh, I just don't know if they proactively would reach out to you and say, hey, the, you just start sending in applications for the winter pool.
Can you have your hand up?
Um, no, he answered.
David?
Not a question, it's a statement. Statement is this, you know that you need to buy a jar of peanut butter in two years. Should you buy it now or should you wait two years? And exactly the, the same logic applies to the Declaration of Official Intent. You find out all of a sudden we're buying that jar of peanut butter on credit before two years from now. We can always take out the Declaration of Intent at that time and go back 60 days. Okay? So my strong suggestion to this board is take no action now.
Thank you, David.
I, I just want to clarify that, that's, that's not really true. You're, by signing this declaration, you're making absolutely no commitment to do other anything. You're just creating the opportunity. If you did spend any money on these projects, you could reimburse yourself. You don't have to reimburse yourself. The only thing that, if you don't do this, then the only certainty is you will not be able to reimburse yourself any costs. But by signing it, you don't make a commitment to do anything. It just leaves an option open.
If on the day that we buy that jar of peanut butter on credit, can we then not file our Declaration of Intent, which goes back 60 days?
But isn't that two different documents?
Yeah.
Well, no, but that's not, so this is, we're not even talking, you're not buying the peanut butter on credit. This is if you bought the peanut butter now with district funds and you realized later the peanut butter was necessary for the project, you could use bond proceeds to pay yourself back for buying the peanut butter with district funds right now. If you don't do this.
A window to do that, is that correct, sir?
It's correct. You have, anytime you can go back 60 days. So if you feel like you're about to spend money, district funds, you could always, within 60 days of spending those funds, adopt. You could always, within sixty days of spending those funds, adopt the declaration.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Um, alright, well, thank you, Eli. I really appreciate you coming and uh, we had you out on time.
So I would just, uh, I do think it's right, there is some, um, there's some sort of ability. To do the declaration now or later, or later, but I would highly recommend that you guys adopt the validation resolution. That will just cure um the notice error uh previously um and sort of. Just put you in a position to sort of move forward whenever you want.
Thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for coming. Really appreciate it.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, so uh, moving on, uh, up next, we have a review and approve board minutes from May twenty second and June eighteen. Uh, Priscilla, I know there was a question on the twenty second, um. Uh, do you wanna accept those with the questions that you mentioned or email?
Um, no, I emailed her back and it said, I I also said, I look forward to working on curriculum involvement with Mike. I said some more stuff too, but I didn't write down anything additional, so.
So, uh, Priscilla, help, help me out with it. Can, can we accept those minutes to with those questions that you emailed her?
And with this sentence added, yes, and Nicole has that, she was going to add it.
Okay, then could I get a motion from you for May twenty second and June eighteen?
I am motion to accept May twenty second minutes with the correction of adding to my statement. I look forward to working on curriculum involvement with Mike.
Thank you. And what about July eighteen?
I haven't seen July eighteen, I can't find them.
Okay. Um, were those minutes?
They're not on the website.
I didn't see July eighteen's minutes either.
Okay, so uh, so right now, we're gonna, we need to approve uh with correction, uh, May twenty second uh minutes. And we'll find out when July eighteen, twenty one. Um, okay, uh, David.
What do I do? Oh, I'm sorry. I, yes.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Yes. Yes.
Mike, yes.
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Jane?
Am I, am I allowed to vote on those if I wasn't here?
She's not, no, not, she's not.
I was, I was looking forward to your first vote.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, um, up next, uh, part of what we've been trying to do is um. Understand kind of what a portrait of a graduate looks like and we have uh, again, some wonderful guest speakers joining us. I appreciate that and I was hoping Mr. Stack could uh introduce them and and get us kicked off.
Sure, our, our first speakers are Andrew Dunbar and his father, John. Andrew is a, a rising junior here at Bellis Paul Union High School and he's a tech student. So we have asked them to come in and share Andrew's story in terms of. How he became a tech student, how that's working out for him and, you know, if you both would like to take fifteen to twenty minutes. And then we could answer questions after the fact. Does that, does that work for you? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here, Andrew.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell how you became a tech student?
Uh, it's a, it's a little bit of a long story.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty minutes.
I, I, I actually left this district after sixth grade to go somewhere that fit me better at the time. And then.
Excuse me, Andrew, could you speak up a little bit because the, the microphones have to pick you up?
And then for my freshman year of high school, I went over to a church school in New Hampshire because they were a very outdoors focused program. But last year, they ended up, a whole bunch of change happened, so it wasn't as good a fit anymore, so I started looking again. And towards the end of the summer, I finally decided to come here because mainly with, because of the tech center opportunity that it gave me. And so I think I signed transfer papers at ten AM on the first day of school. I wasn't technically a student when school started. So that was interesting. And I originally didn't even get the tech program I wanted, but luckily a spot opened up. A day before the class change period ended. So I ended up in carpentry for last year and it was amazing. It was morning carpentry. So I have to get up early to Springfield, but it was nice to be able to go somewhere and. Do some hands-on learning instead of just sitting in a classroom chair and not learning much. Cause I don't, I'll do well with learning theory of stuff. I do well with actually putting my hands on something and doing something. And also the, the writing and the high level math doesn't interest me as much. It's more of the trades that interest me. I wanna go out and do something and be somewhere different every day and not sitting in an office chair.
When Andrew was in second grade at Saxon River Elementary, we noticed. Some challenges for Andrew that he wasn't really integrating into school as well and there were um. Some teachers that had some concerns, uh, so mainly that they thought he was being defiant. That he wouldn't write down anything on a piece of paper when given a writing assignment. Um, and we asked for some testing, they uh, we were told that he tested off the charts. And a lot of that aptitude tests and that he didn't have a learning uh disability. It wasn't until the fourth grade that we actually were able to get him tested.
It was early June when they finally started testing, it'd be like fourteen days.
Right, um, and we found out that he has a processing speed disorder. And that was the, when he's given a writing assignment, he really struggles to get it down on paper. But he has the information and he's um, he's very good, very strong math. If you were to talk to him in a conversation about anything that he's learned, he retains that information and he can say it back to you. Um, but it was a real struggle. He did not like going to school in second grade, third grade, fourth grade. We were able to get him into an outdoor education program one day a week, that saved him. Otherwise, he was very dropped out in third grade. Um, he did not want, school was very, very difficult. Um, and it made life difficult um for him. And then uh, as he said, uh, he ended up going to the Bellis Wolf Middle School, that wasn't uh, the best fit. Still struggling with the um, processing speed and that sense of defiant and people not really understanding his learning disability. Um, and there's no playground, this is an active kid, sitting in a classroom all day saying here, do this. Was not how he learned. Um, and so uh, he ended up moving on to um, the Putney Central School. For a few years and, and that um, that helped. But as he said, you know, it's, we've been trying to find the right fit for him for a long time and um. Andrew has uh, if he sees. Uh, how something can be practical in his life, then he's willing to do it. If it's, if he senses it's sort of, why am I doing this? This is a waste of my time. He doesn't wanna spend that time. He does have a sense of his time is valuable and he wants to spend that time doing something that means something to him. Um, and um, tech is really, we've seen a very different child. Once he got into the tech program, he, he enjoys going to school. Um, you know, starting the day, he's eager, he's in his car before, ready to go to Springfield even before he needs to. Um, and uh, every day when he comes back, how was school today? It's great, so, you know, and. Years prior to that, it was, alright, no school, fine. It was just one word answers and it was, you didn't see the life in him. Um, and I would, you know, I'd say that. This is, this is how this child learns, is hands-on, but we have so much of our curriculum is. Here, here's the sheet, you gotta do this, you have to complete that, yeah, and, but he can. Um, demonstrate in that practical application um. His knowledge and he can do so in a way that is very upbeat and and positive and that's. As a parent, that's been amazing to see. Anything else you wanna add about?
I would tech, not only did I learn a lot that's gonna help me in life, but Mike actually has a nice woodshed out of it now.
We're still on that today.
And he's actually had some people in the community that have uh, recently lost a spouse that used to do all of the wood splitting and stacking and. They needed a woodshed and saw that woodshed that was built at the tech center and he's building a shed for that person. Uh, so, you know, when he, when he sees the value in it, when he can understand that and see what his knowledge is able to do in the community. It's, it's been pretty impressive.
So can we ask you some questions, Andrew? Because sometimes the answers are, are old. Uh, where do you see yourself going? Do you have a sense of what you wanna be, where you wanna go and how you're gonna get there?
So I don't have a necessary sense of exactly what I wanna do or be, but I do, I'm looking into what used to be Vermont Tech College. Which is now Mont State College and a big part of that is I looked at a lot of prerequisites for their programs. And looking at them. I don't know how much of. The requirements to graduate here actually helped me in that sense, cause if you look at Mont Tech, almost every single. For each of Montech, what every, almost every single class, the requirements are algebra one, algebra two, geometry and lab physics, and that's it. You need no other prerequisites. You seem to have graduated high school and have those. So at some times, it seems a little crazy to me, we're trying to, with this school, trying to fit a bunch of these. Classes in for graduation requirements that I'm not necessarily gonna use a lot, some of them. Cause a lot of this information, if you're not doing it professionally. It's only one of us that doesn't have an iPhone in our pocket that we can look up almost anything on any moment. Like a lot of this, we don't need to have a lot of this memorized. We got calculators, we have all this, it's, some of it's just not necessary. At one point it was. Go ahead.
So, so Andrew, I got two.
Yeah.
Basic things, but, um, so you go to the tech center in the morning and then you do classes here in the afternoon, is that the way it works? Or are you doing other things to do in the afternoon or?
So that was last year. I'm looking into this year doing both morning and afternoon in doing level one. As of now, I'm signed up for level one of engineering manufacturing, but I would like to do my level two of carpentry, but with. The requirements I need to graduate here, I don't necessarily have the time to get all of those classes in and do all the tech. So that's been a big struggle.
I think if you talk with them, they can.
Well.
Help your program to take some of those other things, but you know, one thing that, that. And I taught here a lot of years, okay? So one thing that, that students came back and said to me was, you know, you told me I would, I would use this someday. And it surprised me, I used this at that time. So I think one thing is, it, it, we're, we're trying to make a really wide variety. And give you a whole lot of background and a lot of things and carpentry is wonderful. And if you can get in both the morning and the afternoon, I bet you can if you work with your guidance. But just, just ask them where they can apply some of those things, cause they can.
So I've talked to guidance actually multiple times about it. The only way at this moment to get all of my credits on time and do the text that I want. Would be to have two to three online classes going at a time, plus tech, plus sports. And that's not a viable thing to do, especially as a sixteen-year-old. I have no time left in my day at that point.
But ask them what you can apply, cause some things can, if they are not thinking, I'm sure.
And part of the challenges with his um, learning, um, learning disability. That an online class doesn't, won't address that, um, and it will take him four times longer. To write a paragraph than any of us in this room, so any of these online classes could add, that one hour class could add four hours to his day. And a lot of administration.
Okay, thank you, Jason. I need to address this board as well as student and parent. And that is that we need right now, not second, but we need right now, in very near future to. Uh, um, reacquaint ourselves with our current graduation policy. Which I will tell you, I was involved in the writing of a long time ago, because I believe that this board. Has the ability to waive specific graduation requirements. I'm getting some currents from my rock and hand colleague about this. And I will point out why strongly believe that to be the case, because we do. Uh, routinely graduate our profound needs. Students who have met the requirements of the program which has been developed for them. I think that starting right now, even before we dive substantially into. Uh, weighing the pros and cons of our twenty-eight credit graduation policy. That we need to start considering how we are going to give the best and the brightest students who should walk through these doors. Sometimes the opportunity to really thrive in their education. And walk out of this building with the diploma that they've earned. So I'm really, really hopeful that when you have your next discussion with guidance. That maybe um, and current administration as well as the other powers that be will start taking a hard look. At what students really need in order to be successful in life and it's not always twenty-eight credits. Thank you.
Well said. Uh, David, can I ask you a question? How, how would we do that? Excuse me? How does the board waive that?
Well, it's very interesting because most of the time bluntly, these requirements have been waived without so much as a how do you do the board? Um, Priscilla probably would have, you know, more direct knowledge of how um, a special needs student might have a. Modified uh, you know, graduation requirement. Um, but certainly I think that information is already known to our guidance department. And um, they ought to be in a position to help this young man um, take advantage of. Um, you know, what we are, we'll call it flexible pathways. Oh my God, we give it lip service, let's start practicing it.
Now, let me just add to that, yes, um, I worked with special ed for twenty-five years here. And my students got there, they graduated, they didn't always meet the same exact. My new requirements, but you're able to take a course, you're able to take, for example, this afternoon program, which is next. Upper level thing, it probably has some other skills in there that can apply in different, different areas. And that he wouldn't have to take those online classes or any of the rest. I advocate for twenty-eight credits, because you can get twenty-eight credits, actually you could get thirty-two easily with eight periods. And so twenty-eight, if you reduce it too much, you're gonna be looking at everybody saying, oh, well, I don't have to go. And, and we know that four years is important in maturation and all of that, so it is important to. To maintain, you know, high levels of education for our students. But a student like this can certainly take those credits and can look at different areas where they can be applied and where they can be given credit. And normally, it doesn't even have to come to the board. Um, because it can be done through the school and then figuring out where it can apply. In a serious case where it can't be, then they could bring it to the board and we could look at that. And a student who has done four years of intense training in all different kinds of areas would certainly be a good student. That we wanna waive requirements for.
One of our future speakers will be our, Mark Ebo and Andrew Carlson. So they're gonna talk a lot about flexible pathways and, you know. We've had Deb Cardane in here and obviously we have Kelly here. I think that's a major focus of. The school and administration, so I think we're gonna be hearing more and more about that. From the people that will be implementing it and uh, so does anybody else have any questions? I think that was an excellent, go ahead, Andrew.
I'd just like to say, I think, I'd like to bring this less away from the learning disability part of it. There are people who don't have learning ability that they learn way better hands-on. And I think that it probably, I can get the twenty credits in the number of credits, that's not a problem. The problem is almost all of the stuff I do in tech is math and elective credits, so I'm not getting. The English requirement, I'm not getting the social study requirement, the science requirement, any of those requirements that are put in. So my history department, that for the most part, it's going on to what I'm looking at. It's not as big of a thing that I would need if I was going on to a regular college, that makes sense, right? Makes complete sense to have all those, but going into what I'm looking at, I'm looking at engineering, mechanics, all that kinda stuff. Doesn't seem as necessary for a lot of those fields.
Have, have you ever worked with Heather Warriors? Have, have you ever worked with Heather Warriors in, in the job-focused piece of, um, the academics?
Personally, I've not, I looked into it, but I decided to attack.
Yeah.
And I thought about maybe considering two texts, doing a tech in the morning and a job in the afternoon.
Right.
But I didn't, but again, the class requirements get hard with the stuff I wanna do being more math and physics-related, less of the paperwork, the writing, all of that stuff.
I, I'm just wondering if you could potentially get some of those credits through a, a job shadow or a, a work-based experience. Whether it was something to do with the history work, you know, the meeting house and being renovated or whatever, I mean, I'm just, you know.
I think that's a great, that would be a great way to do it as well.
Might be an option, you know.
Might be, that would, that could possibly be an option, yeah.
So, uh, hold on a second, David. Uh, Andrew, what, what grade are you in?
I'm going into my junior year next year.
I, I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but I think you're very well spoken in. So, uh, that's, uh, that's incredible.
Yeah.
Um, so, what, you know, Mike always calls this the listening tours. What I, what I wanna know is, cuz I'm, I take this seriously. Uh, cuz you definitely don't get paid a lot to do this job. So what I, what I wanna know from the speakers is, what would some of your solutions be? What would you guys do to change? Like where we're at and what you think we need to do, cuz you brought up a great point with the, the cell phones and everything, you know, everyone's born on the phone these days. The, the technology and the answers are there immediately. And so I, I'm looking for, how do we fix it?
I would say, I, I think it would be more of a look into what the, the kids wanna do, especially these ones that wanna take a different path, like I get keeping those requirements for the kids who stay in school all day, cuz they have that time to take these different classes instead of taking just one class and then over again. But when you're going to the tech center, it's, you're, you try to focus on one thing cuz you're getting a lot of training in that, but in doing that, you're only getting one type of credit, two types of credits for the most part. And so looking at those kids are doing techs and are doing these job shadows and stuff, and looking at what do they actually, wh- what makes sense for them to have as requirements? When they get here, instead of having them have to go through a bunch of meetings themselves, trying to push the school to help them with those requirements. And just kind of look at the beginning of what they're here for. And kind of start to see and try to make contact with them and say, what do you think you need? Instead of making it the other way where they have to try to find it.
Thank you.
I would, um, I would just add that, you know, I think a lot of us have probably heard or felt that need to harness the passion that you have, and if you can find a passion, he clearly has found that his desire to do things with his hands and learn that way are, are incredible, and I don't have that same skill, but if we can harness the passion that these kids have and focus, have that be the focus? Not that you have to do all this other stuff, and if there's time, if there's the ability, you can go do that passion. It should be ninety percent of that passion and, and focus on that. And then are there critical things that are needed, life skills aside from that? Um, then we add those in, but it just seems a little, i- it's flipped upside down. And I grew up in a, in an area like many of you, where you go to school, you go to college, you get a job, you get married, you do all those things. Um, and that's quickly changing. And I think if we can find the passion when they're in high school and we can send them out into the world really confident at eighteen years old with some skills, um, you know, this kid can fix a car, he could probably build a car. Has he ever done it? No, but I bet you he could do it if he put all the tools in this room. I can't do that. I couldn't change a tire when I graduated. I did not have balance of checkbook when I went to high school. So there are a lot of things that we don't teach, that we got through, but let's, let's make them where they're at and just let them start.
Well said. Thank you. Any other questions? Who was first?
Yeah. I just wanna like encourage, we wanna build, help these kids build to succeed. And so that ninety percent of finding that passion, I mean, you're gonna do great. You're doing great, and it's just, I, uh, my son did the tech program as well and his future has blossomed because of that, and I just, I wanna scream to the rooftops, repair video, cuz it's like, yay, we can support them and they're gonna make it.
Twelve months ago, this wouldn't be happening. He wouldn't be here speaking like he is. He was a very frustrated kid that didn't know where the future is going to be. It's pretty dramatic. And I think you see that, hopefully, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to say also that I know Mike as a board at our, as a board member at RBGC, you're very proud of this, I'm pretty sure Mr. Far as well. That in the last couple of years, RBGC, the people graduating from that program and going on to college decreased by almost ten percent, which that's not them doing nothing, that's them going straight into the workforce out of high school and making money. They don't have to go, go into debt to get a job.
Hold on a second, Dave. Did, did you guys have a question?
Only thing I wanted to say, if we can take, if we can take adults, non-deplomed adults, and we can give them, they can get their GED by giving life experience in exchange for all the school learning, sitting at tables, why can't we do that? With students who aren't intending to go to college, whom we, who have the skills to do other things, finding substitutes, finding ways that fit, not substituting per se, but being able to evaluate them differently than you'd evaluate a student who's sent off to college. And I think that we, we can do that for non-deplomed adults, we can find a way to do that. That are actually actively trying to stay in high school.
David?
Andrew, did I hear you say manufacturing technology?
Yeah, yeah, manufacturing engineering will be my morning next year.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Deb, I wanna thank you for the lead into my remarks here. And I'm gonna take note of the fact that there are three administrators in this room, Scott Farm certainly is a preeminent administrator after many, many years working with him. Um, we, we had this concept that administrators at least will be familiar with, which was called embedded credits. And, uh, someone who is taking, I call it manufacturing technology, was the correct term?
Is manufacturing engineering level one.
Manufacturing and engineering level one is going to be deeply immersed in, uh, mathematics. And there ought to be, just as Deb has pointed out, um, embedded credits that we could recognize toward, um, Bell's Falls Junior High School with the Clamire. And I think it's really incumbent that we start working on this now. So that when June rolls around, uh, we're not graduating fifty-three kids out of seventy-five or whatever that statistic was that we got the last time we met. And well, all I can say is you're in the right place, and I'm really glad to hear that you are, you know, making full utilization of the program and you'd like to do more. You know, this, good, good for you, good parenting.
And I don't, I, I don't know the exact words. I do know there is an embedded general math credit, not a specific one, like Algebra One to whatever, cuz that's the theory stuff that we do here. But there's embedded general math and there is embedded electives in it. So it covers some requirements there, but it does not cover a lot of requirements.
Kathleen, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say, and I don't remember if they had the tech program when I was in school. Um, but I had a passion, I wanted to be a nurse. When I, but I didn't wanna go to college. I did not like school at all. And I was not gonna pay that kind of money to go to college. If I could have learned it hands-on, I would have been there the day I graduated. But I, I wasn't gonna pay to do something that I hated that bad, the schoolwork. Um, and I, I think it's a wonderful program.
Thank you.
And, and now I'm a town clerk, I'm not a, a nurse.
Favor before you part, there's a, on a sheet of paper there, I could just put name, phone number, email, I just wanted to let's say thank you to you guys. Personally, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that an attaboy?
Thank you.
So our next speaker, if we're ready, uh, Scott Farr, who runs River Valley Tech Center. He's the superintendent and director there. And as David mentioned before, uh, in the state of Vermont, Scott Farr's name is recognized with all things that are career in tech education. He's somebody that legislature turns to when they have questions about the program, um, and the students, to be honest with you. And so we're privileged to have Scott here today. I think, Scott, uh, you could just open up and give your thoughts, and you've obviously had one of your students lead, lead off the discussion. You wanna dovetail off of that or just go into bigger picture issues? It's up to you.
It would, it reminds me of my friends when I go to concerts in Montreal, and they would say the opening act blew the main act off. Hard one, um, well, I'm Scott Farms, superintendent, uh, director of the River Valley Technical Center. This, I'll be starting my twentieth year. Sometimes if you're around a long time, anybody else who might know more than you goes away, so then you're just left standing there, so that was very kind. The rules and regulations how school runs haven't changed much in the last twenty years. Dave indicated, Dave, Dave Clark, who's been on our board through all the years that I was there, indicated that flexible pathways was something that came about around two thousand fourteen and so.
Yeah.
Those are all beautiful phil- philosophical things that the state put forward to us to make our education more student-centered. But how do you do it day to day? Every day with all the different converging interests? And they said we should all move to a proficiency-based system. But how do you do it? And so some of this conversation that you're having about Andrew accessing the education that works the most for him, our challenges are in are in the system that have never, never fully been addressed, in a system that's stressed by the demands of students. It's at the middle of five different high schools. And I hear from my peers around the state, what you're talking about here is no different than every high school in the state of Vermont. In a time of declining enrollment, the directors in the state of Vermont, and I'm gonna be the president of the organization, our director of association this year, in the last decade or so have made several runs at, hey, let's fix these things so that we can take down the barriers of access to career technical education. Because for the most part, we're all gonna have to work doing something for about a hundred thousand hours before they say you don't have to work no more. So we should, career education should be part of what you do in school, where you have a caring, a bunch of adults around you, and that's while you're getting your education that makes you a well-rounded student, you should be working towards and experimenting and trying and become aware of where you can apply that and where you can feel you're more worth, worthwhile and happy, happy, happiness. And I did the same thing, go to college, do the, do the thing over the years and drink that Kool-Aid. We need to find a balance between all of what the kid wants to do and how they're gonna apply it. In a time of declining enrollment. So the, eh, tech directors over the last ten years have come up with a series of white papers to say, these are the things you need to fix to realize more student access to career and technical education. Number one, let's fix the funding formula, fix the funding system. Because right now, the funding system puts us in adversarial, adversarial situation with the very schools that we serve. That roughly for every student attends a career and technical education center, there's roughly seven thousand dollars in unrealized revenue that comes to that school. That doesn't make much sense if we're all supposed to be working together to help students become the most that they can be. Why should we pit it against each other? And that's exacerbate with the fact that we're in an environment of declining enrollment. Two, the other thing that we were, and these are the two big things we wanna address are uh, much smaller things, but the other thing was the credit proficiency-based system. Some high schools are running on credit, some are proficiency, some are both. And it's hard to navigate all that for the people on the ground. It's hard for attendants, so I know five different sending schools to say, hey, if you take carpentry, if you take advanced back manufacturing, engineering, this is the learning that happens, and how can we apply it to your graduation credits and crosswalk all of that. Some schools have a hundred and sixty proficiencies. My friend who runs the Stafford Tech Center in Rutland has twelve different high schools they work with. That's a lot of work to say, if you do this, then you get this, and then supply it to your sending school. Now, we're gonna embark on that with a position that's part-time to try to make that, so it's a cleaner, um, look for Andrew, say, what do I get if I wanna graduate? That's a lot of work. And probably by the time the work is done, the powers that will be, have a di- will have a different philosophy in the state of this is how you should do education, because there are barriers to accessing career and technical education in the twenty-eight, twenty require credits. Sean Murphy, who was at Springfield High School, was a math teacher here. We would talk about that at Springfield, barriers to access, and we'd say, well, the bell is falling, we would say, that's part of the kid's personal learning plan of what their plan is, and we would make a flexible pathway to make that happen. Between the school and the tech center, and if there was some special recipe as far as, hey, he needs our crap credit, how can we manipulate the curriculum to make that happen? So the kid can get access to what they want to move closer to their post-high school dream. Um, but it's a lot of work when you're talking about hundreds or thousands of students with everyone has all their own individual recipe. And you throw three years of pandemic in the middle of all that. So, um, I have a lot of understanding for my spending schools because it's hard. I would never wanna be a regular school administrator. I like a school where kids come and find their passions. Internal motivation versus external motivation is a much better thing. Um, but the pieces that you talk about here are of why we had a white paper, uh, I asked, uh, Mike to share those white papers with you. Um, the white papers created enough, uh, momentum with the legislature that they commissioned a study, APA study. They did listening tours all around the state. Um, they talked to, uh, stakeholders, they talked to kids about all that, they made some recommendations. Those recommendations are sitting with the, the Agency of Education now. The Agency of Education is supposed to take those recommendations forward. I've heard they haven't done much with it. Um, take those recommendations forward for, to rule changes to the legislature, so they act and change the rules in that tech, technical education that haven't changed for over twenty years. Um, so that some of the barriers to access can be removed. Um, so it isn't just what has Bell's Falls done or hasn't done to address some of these things. A bigger systemic piece. Um, so hopefully, the APA study is great. I think they nailed it. Um, but hopefully, something will happen and make, they'll answer some of these questions, so high schools aren't left to the state passes something on, and then you figure out how to do it with all the other things they handed down over the last two decades for us to do, and what did they take away while they were adding, and how do you make it all work? It's, it's a challenge for sure. But I will say, over my years, and I told Michael this, when, uh, he asked me to do this, I will, I will say, number one, the messages got out that Bell Falls wants their kids to access tech ed, and it isn't just since Mike came along. I know David said, said that over the years. So my twenty years, I will say that Bell Falls has been very flexible and encouraging in how to, problem-solving and how to have kids access career and technical education. Doesn't mean there isn't conversations that have to happen to figure it out. Doesn't mean like, oh, this is like Andrew's hearing. How do we make this work? My history of twenty years has shown that Bell Falls figures it out, and they'll listen to the kid and let it happen. Read the, read the white papers, read the APA study. The other piece I would throw at you The other piece I would throw at you, and in Vermont, the thirty percent of the available high school population attends a career and technical education program. That doesn't seem like it's enough. I mean, my belief is a hundred percent of students should participate in career, something to shape their career, whether it's come to a technical center, Springfield, River Valley, or Wyndham Regional, that would be a great choice, or have some experience in the workforce of some kind so that you when you're gonna spend the big bucks to go on a post-secondary that you kinda know where you're applying it. The other statistics I would throw at you is traditionally, our society is thought of career and technical education as something for kids that don't go on to college. We're usually right around fifty percent of our kids go on to some sort of post-secondary. I would, I don't know what Bell's Falls post-secondary rate is, but I would, what I'm hearing from principals and leaders I work with, that's right about where every school is right now. So it isn't that old traditional piece of you go to tech center so you can get a job, now you go to tech center so that you can take the next step, that's what you wanna do in a post-secondary, is that natural next step? Then you should do it. It's interesting, Andrew, talking about going to VTC and maybe he can't get the credits he needs. The teacher that I have teaching my advanced manufacturing engineering program wrote the bachelor's degree program in mechanical engineering at Vermont Tech, that there are eighteen dual enrollment credits in that class. But to, but to put the icing on the cake, this isn't your high school, it's another high school I work with. When I said, well, yeah, there's a dual enrollment class that has those curriculum components. The vice principal of the high school came back to me and said, well, we never gave high school credit for a dual enrollment crosswalk class at a tech center, and I'm like, what? That doesn't make sense. You gotta high-end curriculum that addresses your proficiency, but we're not sure you can do that. So that, we should all be scratching our head about those things.
Yes, Scott. So you're talking about potential legislation that's coming down the pipe. The flexible pathways program passed in twenty thirteen. It's been around a long time. What, is that not what is needed to be able to develop the flexibility for individualizing ed plans for students? What else is needed? I mean, it seems like it's already there, it's just a function of implementing it at the different schools.
The way that I understand the flexible pathways is also, there's multiple components. One of the components that I think is the leverage that's what happened in the situation Andrew is talking about is the personal learning plan. What is the student wanna do? And what is the four years of curriculum and experience that can shape what the student wants to do? And then you have to balance that with the graduation requirements, and when one thing gets in the way of the other, then you try to be creative and solving that, that can be, as you mentioned, the online class. It can be individual plan where they may get that, that credit in a work experience, it may be alternative project at a tech center or their high school, it's it's, it opens it up for high schools to be as flexible as possible. As I have testified and said to APA, without a lot of guidance from the Agency of Education, I think that high schools gravitated naturally towards the work that was most in their wheelhouse, so they went towards proficiency-based education and all of that, and they went at it hard. I think a lot of schools, when talked about work-based learning, oh, we'll just hire a person to do that, and a lot of schools did that. The personalized learning plan in coming out of a system that was twenty, moved to twenty-six, moved to twenty-eight credits, that probably was a harder thing to figure out, and maybe not as much got done there, and this is the general observation of the, of what I've seen in my two decades. And all that was someone, not a lot of guidance from, say, how do you make it work? It's left in the hands of locals and hands are full to try to figure it out.
Mike and I went up to RVTC graduation, and it was interesting, the number of kids who were graduating with dual enrollment credits. There are a lot of, number of sixes, a lot of eights, and tens, and twelves, and Scott, if I recall correctly, I had one kid walk out of there, eighteen dual enrollment credits.
Engineering program, yes.
Okay, eighteen dual enrollment credits, okay? Now, translate that to what's happening at Bell's Falls High School. Okay, it's just rhetorical thing, so I need to go back, I need to go back to the white paper and study that Scott has talked about here, and Scott, if I recall correctly, there have been four major studies done on tech ed roughly the last eight or ten years, and there has been essentially no movement. And I'm gonna tell you what the result of that is, and I'm gonna tell tales at a school here. It's not that long ago that Springfield, the largest sending school in the district, effectively ratcheted about forty kids out of the tech program. One hundred percent they wanted the seven thousand dollars, and if they needed it, and the issue in that was, and by the way, the way they did it was with prerequisites, okay? You know, like algebra one, algebra two, and these progressions that serve as barriers to kids getting into the tech programs. And it was a pretty lean few years at RVTC, which is a complete school choice situation, no kids there, doesn't wanna be there, and RVTC and the other tech programs, well, specifically RVTC and the other independents sink or swim based on their enrollment, that's where the, that's where the revenue comes from this port of school. I'm making the point, and I'm getting a little bit off, off topic here, but I'm making the point that in order for the tech centers to survive, the tech centers need to have a degree of predictability about what the expectations are gonna be for the graduates, and they need to have predictability with the term, in terms of what the expectations will be for their revenue flows. And I'm doubling down on the old mantra here, which is, it's critically important that we remove those barriers, the artificial barriers to access. And in so doing, we need to take a long, hard look at flexible pathways, proficiency-based graduation requirements, and make sure that the Andrews, thank goodness, and past have the same access that Andrew did. I'm sorry for ramble, but you know, when you've been looking at this stuff for twenty years, and Scott's prime example of it, you gotta understand how difficult it is to provide programming that has allowed these kids to thrive. And certainly, given those difficulties, it's really important that every kid who possibly can get into the tech center who wants to be there, has that opportunity. Thank you for letting me talk too much.
Thanks for letting me preach the past twenty years of owning my message, so I, once I get going, it starts to stop, but if you had any questions or
Question behind you.
This is a moral question, I just, I heard you were talking about personalized learning plans. And my experience that here is a little bit odd, because the way they do personalized learning plans here, they give you a certain amount of time every quarter in your homeroom class to do the work that needs to be done every quarter. And it happens to be that taking morning class, you miss homeroom, and then I will get an email two days after it was due, and they're like, if you don't do it by tomorrow, you're in homework lab, I'm like, I didn't know I was supposed to do it. Thanks for that. And also, I feel like it's kind of a thing of, it's more of the person who does it here, Mr. Peister, he, I feel like it's not as looked at, I don't know how, how it's behind the scenes, but it's not as looked at. He more just looks at, is it completed to the point where I told you to, and then just grades it and leaves alone. It's not really looked at that hard, it's just, we just do it because the state told us to do it, is my impression of it.
It, it's a, one of the things that this, this we enjoy a pretty good relationship with actually the Agency of Education, we, I can call somebody up and they'll answer and they'll talk to you and so forth, and answer email or one of the things that we talked about is pushing career counseling with guidance folks all around the state, so that guidance counselors or school counselors have that in their kit bag of what to do and how to help students. And everybody's done, that's a great idea, it is a great idea, but also know what your guidance folks are doing, they're dealing with trauma and the reactions to trauma, and just trying to piece things together, that's like something I see. That it's hard to do all of the things, when you're just trying to get the student through the day, maybe the continuum was moving towards people, towards careers, baked into the system rather than something you tack on. Then maybe those students would feel more engaged and involved and participatory in their education, but that's a big way, different way of looking at, at how we do education in Vermont or the United States.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Scott, we really appreciate you coming in.
Check us out on Facebook, there's a Bell's Falls student that got nine hundred dollar worth of tools today, and is working for Control Tech, so like us on Facebook. Okay, up next, we have unfinished business for discussion action. Number A is adoption of resolution for bonds, table from seven eighteen.
So, real quick, just, this is the validation resolution that Eli was talking about, because there was an incorrect posting of of how the bond was posted prior to the, to the voting in all of the different towns. So this would just clarify that piece, adopt that it's not holding you. You're not spending any money, you're not allocating any money, you're not issuing bonds, you're not doing anything, you're just correcting that, and then as Eli said, then he could issue a letter essentially, so that if we ever decided to go out the bond, we can move quickly on that piece, but it's just that correction, so it's not holding you.
It's not, it's not held to time.
Not held to time, it's not, this is correcting an error from the past.
Was this the Jarrett Gabor David was talking about?
No, this is, so this is just the validation of
And that's the one that just Jason signed?
Actually
And that's it?
And there's just one, or is there one?
There's just one. So that's one. So then the other one is, that is B, which is the what? Declaration of official intent, which was the, the lengthier discussion, which is about the sixty days and the three years type of thing, which Eli was saying, you could, you could do it now, you could also table that, so that, those are, those are not as I mean, none of them are dire, from my understanding from talking to Eli and everything, but these could be tabled, the, the validation should really be signed, just to correct that.
All right, what's, what's everybody's vote? Who was first?
I'd just like to move it, me too, and that's what I was gonna do, I'd like to move the adoption of resolution for bonds and for separately, I don't want to put these together, and that's, that's for corrections, right, to protect ourselves from what happened after March.
Correct, that is eight A. I hear you correctly, you wanna move to adopt the resolution for the bond.
Right, and I have to be signed.
Right, so we have a motion on the floor and a discussion?
See him.
I have a question, so is this because it wasn't followed the way it was supposed to be, to be warned for the public? That's what I'm getting.
That something was wrong.
Yeah, it was it, this is a CYA moment.
My understanding is that the, the resolution, each town has to approach it for a number of days in a number of different places, and that didn't take place.
And I, I believe he said something like, next time we do that, we should get their advice, so we can correct it the first time.
Right, right after the bond.
So that was Kelly's fault. David, how, how would you like to vote on it?
Yes.
Priscilla?
I'm reading it.
I'll, I'll go back to her.
We'll come back to you.
Yes.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes, yes.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna put it down as an abstain, that's okay?
That's fine.
All right. Next up, A D, adopt the declarations of official intent, table from seven eighteen. Well, timeout.
Getting a signature. But you can always do it.
Are we, well, we can, any to do his thing. So adopt declarations of official intent, table from seventeen eighteen.
Ethan, can I ask a procedural question? This time, I've just been trying to find a lot of information about this as a new board member. Do our buildings and grounds committees, the information that they present to this board, it's a separate committee, they meet, talk about a lot of things, the information that they gather, do we collect that anywhere, is there like a, a Google Drive or documents or place where we, where, where any of that is counted?
So I, I don't recall if there was minutes taken from the buildings and grounds committee meetings, but I do know that they are the buildings grounds committees, recorded meetings.
They're open.
They're open.
There should be. And there should be, I, I would, I would second that question, because I think it's important for a variety of people that come in at different times, that there's a understanding of clear consistency forward and understanding how things have been, happened in the past, and how do we not have to reinvent it, but get people up to speed for that? So I would, I would strongly suggest that, and it protects us.
I know there's been Zoom, is back TV on there?
No, we can, we can make sure the minutes are recorded going forward, I can't remember if they are or not, since they had the last meeting.
And even if we just keep
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Deb?
My, basically a comment, any board, any committee that is appointed by the board must behave as though they were a board, they are sub, they are subset, they must have minutes. They must take, they, their recommendations, they could, you know, they don't necessarily take, make motions or whatever, but they do have to because that's back as a recommendation to the board, but they have to keep minutes. And from any committees that I've gotten reports on the floor on, I've never seen minutes.
So I, to answer your question again, I don't, I don't know if Molly kept minutes or not, I, I don't recall. It's been a while since we had a meeting, but I can assure you the next time we do that, we'll, we'll appoint somebody to take minutes.
I think just
Go ahead.
I just, it's Rob volunteers to take minutes. That's not, that's, that's not a, that's not the pathway, that's not a flexible pathway. So, I think it would be important for every subcommittee, and not, so we mentioned buildings and ground, but I think we have the, you know, policy, whatever it is, so we need to have that and have a shared file so that we all can do our job and be up to speed by the time we get to these.
That's a good point. Like a Google shared doc or something like that?
Don't we still Andy? Have a Google.
They, they should be posted. They should be, they should be posted on the website. They shouldn't be. But, but I, I don't know why they're not.
If you're not part of the committee, it wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, but, but. Because they're part of open meeting, anyone is entitled to have it. So a shared Google Drive would imply not following open meeting. So.
Can I ask for a clarification? So is there a way to do both?
I would have to research that.
I agree with you about the, on the website and stuff, but then to have us be able to have something centralized to be able to draw from.
That's good. I, I, I will find that.
Okay, thank you.
And I know that when, after usually we have the meetings, we've always came back to the next meeting and discussed uh, those things, but um. Then those meetings are recorded and minutes, we usually don't make anything out. No traction about that.
David?
Um, regarding the buildings ground staff, I took informal minutes at several. But I don't believe all of those meetings and if somebody can shoot me a list of dates, I'll see if I can pull them up and.
It's been a long time since we passed on.
Okay, so uh, back to uh, uh. Eight V, adopt the declaration of official intent. Um, I guess a question for Annie in terms of. Um. When do we think these, this money will be used and should we look at this? For winter, spring, or are we looking later than that on u- utilizing some of these funds?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. Um, I have a meeting. Um, I'm looking at my emails right now and, and Steve Horton is. Was nice enough to give me a couple of weeks off here too. So um, we're, he's trying to schedule a meeting with me so we can kind of get some. Pieces down with our construction management team. Um. The, you would not be looking at trying to even access these bonds un- until. At earliest is that winter. This coming winter, right? So that, so you're talking those funds when you, you wouldn't even be looking at those funds before we march.
So would we do the projects by June? Cause we have sixteen, I think it was sixty days.
So, so you have it with these declarations, right? You have six months to start spending the money. Yes, yeah.
As long as we.
So we were slated, we've been planning for the parking lot to be done next summer.
Excellent.
And the roof project would be something that would be done after the HVAC system.
And.
And the HVAC system is our top priority and so um, we've got to get approval from the AOE, uh, you know, file approval on them. So we're um. We, we're just waiting on a couple of bids and once we get the bids in, then we can push up for final approval. But your, that money has to be spent by September twenty four. So. What you don't have to do, what you don't have to do with these bonds is you don't have to get both of them at the exact same time. So you could get the bond for your, your parking lot, do your parking lot, wait, cause you have authorization from the, the public to go out the bond. At any time in the future. So um, so you're not beholden to anything. Sorry.
You meant the roof first and then the parking lot after bond down.
Well, no, so, so if we're. If you're looking at the parking lot, if I'm using a, a, a date that was in our head was that we were going to do the parking lot. In the summer of next year, the summer of twenty four. The Acer funds that are paying for the HVAC system have to be expended by September of twenty four. We want to bring in all the heavy equipment needed to drive over the surface before we do the parking lot. So. If we're thinking that the HVAC system is probably gonna stretch all the way through September of twenty four. You're looking at the roof after September of twenty four. So you're probably be looking at doing your driveway first and then your roof follows.
Does, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Well, we also don't, we don't have a bid on any of this. We really don't know what money we need. The bond that we, that we just approved, I think that people just talked about was up to a certain amount. So. It wouldn't it be?
Two million.
Yeah, two million. Wouldn't it be kind of nice to have a, know what we're talking about before we?
So, so.
Look at what we're getting.
So again, I'm not asking for any money. I'm not asking you to expend any funds today. I'm not asking you to hold yourself beholden to any funds. All this declaration allows you to do. Is if you end up spending any of your capital reserve funds. Now on a project, let's say we've got to do, let's say for. For the parking lot, you've got to do a survey. And we've got to do the survey. In three months from now. Right? That if you expend local funds on that survey. And then you go out the bid or you go out with bond, you can then pay yourself back to your locals. If you don't sign this declaration, then you can't get your money back.
But we have, we have, if you're talking about money, three months, okay, using your three months is, is what I'm using. Three months from now, we're gonna, we might spend some money. Well, at that point, at three months, that's when I feel we should do maybe a validation. Because we have sixty days back that we can get it anyway. So it's still to do a validation now because the validation is only good. For three, three years of expenditure. And if we end up not doing the survey then, we do the survey next summer. We end up putting it off and on, then we still have longer. So to me, I, I am not in, in a favor of doing a validation now. Sixty days back anyway.
I do need to interrupt you. I just wanna.
Go ahead.
It's a declaration, not a validation. You already approved the validation.
Sorry.
The other piece that Eli said was if you sign this. And then in a couple of years, you're looking at, oh, we didn't, we decided to push that project out. You would then be able to do another declaration at any time. To then get your money back. It's, so it's, it's more of a procedure. I, I'm not saying if you don't sign, if you don't wanna. To just move on. I mean, at this point, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's only, it's only helping you as a board, but.
And to me, it's not helping any because to wait, it doesn't cost me anything to wait and see what we're doing. To me, that's prudent so that I can think about, about.
Thank you, Priscilla. Joe?
I kind of remember being at a WNSU meeting where Steve Horton had said that. Some of the HVAC maybe for the um, system, some of their components were. Um, the, the ordering period is like six months or whatever. Have we ordered any of that?
Which we cannot do anything.
Okay, so we haven't done anything.
With, that was the big piece to get the construction management team on.
Okay.
The construction management has to get the, the subcontract, contracting bids out and before. Before then we can even move forward, then that has to go up to the AOE for approval.
Okay, and the HVAC is what we were looking at spending the Esser money on.
Right.
Okay, I am in favor of signing the declaration because it's not committing us to anything and like. Eli said, we can. Renew or make up a new declaration at any point.
Yep, so, Rob, uh, yeah, just, just for clarification. Separate HVAC roof, totally different than the driveway. So no matter what happens.
Three separate projects.
Right, but I'm saying no matter what happens, the driveway will be done. We are planning now for the driveway. In terms of funding, in terms of bidding and all that. So that's gonna be done even if the HVAC and the roof gets delayed. Or is that not? HVAC. Should not get delayed because it has a time. End, end of that money is available.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have next September, not this September, but next September. We don't have a few million dollars to burn in a hole. I mean, we have it right now. The roof project will need to get done at some point in the very near future because you're going on the life. Expectancy of your current roof. But it is not, it would. In talking with Stephen, what his recommendation to me was is that the roof get redone after the HVAC system. Because you don't want to put a whole new membrane on and then punch a whole bunch of holes in it. And so that was the reason.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Um, what is the superintendent's recommendation?
Jason, I had asked a question about, sorry, I'm sorry, are the, is the, so it's separate projects.
Right.
The driveway is planning on being done June, July, August. No matter what happens to HVACs and roofs.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
What, what is your recommendation?
So, but my recommendation is it, it doesn't hurt you to sign it, um, but if there are reservations. Um, you can always hold off. We can bring it back at the next meeting. So uh, it, that, that was about as clear as mud, I know. Um, but.
I was expecting that. Yeah. Jamie?
Um, I'm gonna ask a question and I really don't intend to open a can of worms, so I apologize. Um. Molly Vannick at the Westminster um, town meeting said that a lot of these projects would not move forward until we did the testing for PCBs. Um, and I think that's been done, but there are no results for that.
We do not have the results back yet.
The first time was, they did the testing, but the air quality was spoiled at the lab. So they had to come back and do new air quality testing and we're waiting for results for that from that.
I'm told hopefully the first week of August.
And does that still affect any decision making in terms of spending money?
Um, it, it could. I think that depending on what those results are, there are mitigating factors that we have to take. And, and, and put into place. Um, so it would be a matter of, um, if those. If, if that testing came back, but I, I, I want to clarify that, that this testing, this initial testing. Is also only going to identify potential areas that need to have additional testing. So if they come back and then, oh, there's PCBs in the air, now they have to then figure out where there's PCBs. Are they coming from the mastic in the? In the um. The floor, you know, the um, the molding or is it mastic that's in, or the talking? And so there, there's additional tests. They go in and then they're gonna. Identify those areas because then we have to mitigate those areas.
Well, so it wouldn't necessarily affect the things that we need to do this building anyway, those would be separate things.
Correct.
We wouldn't do what Burlington did, which is abandon an entire building.
If theoretically speaking, if the numbers were so high, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, if the numbers were so high, um, the um. The good and the bad is we have an open concept school. The, the good there is we have this flexibility. It's one of the things Kelly was just walking me around, some of the things they've already done, you know, like we're looking at doing some construction over here. And it's like, we can shift pretty, pretty easily, right? The bad is, it's all open. So if there's PCBs over there, they might be over there. But um, I, I think that's, we're still waiting to get that answer.
Priscilla?
Yeah, I thought too, the roof was tied up with some Esser fund, funding because that's also in there. And we haven't gotten a report on that yet to know where we're going because my understanding was we were going to use Esser funds for some of that. And then we could use additional because of passing the bond, we'd be able to use additional if we had to have them. But if we don't have to have them, and I know Esser funds are out there and we don't have everything expended and we don't know. But if a project falls through and we want to use the other one for that, I, I hate moving forward and use, you know, getting money for something that. Could be taken care of another way first. I feel like we need to find that out before we. Move forward. I, I am all for waiting at least until the next meeting so that we can get more answers.
Deb?
At the last meeting, we brought up the fact that we, as a board, we are not, and I know I, I look for someone. We are not aware in, in a physical report, not a verbal report, but a physical report, how much money. We have already expended on what we have expended it, what is left, what is earmarked already. And what remains after the earmarks. We had and expressed that. I know I specifically expressed it. Um, believe we, I did it where Jim was here. Um. I think that we need that. You're expressing the same thing, a doubt or misunderstanding about what the money, what money's left and what money is being earmarked. For certain projects. What we don't need to buy, to sign a bond for, which is what came up last week and we don't have that yet.
So can I make a, a, an observation? So based on what uh, Priscilla and Deborah saying, is it your recommendation we table us again until the next meeting and have some more uh? Uh, more documents?
What documents are we asking for? Just uh.
Does that, do you need a motion to ask for this Esser um, breakdown?
Actually Deb, I'm looking. I did provide it written in my monthly. You probably weren't on board anymore, but.
But, well, then I'm, then I'm asking that.
Provided it and um, the roof project for this building was taken off. Back when we asked for the bond originally because the HVAC system went from two million to five million dollars. And so therefore, at some point, something has to give of what's gonna happen. I mean, roof projects in Rockingham are. Are pushing around one point three million dollars that we've earmarked for those things. I mean, I, I'm happy to provide, uh, there's no secrecy here. I mean, like. There's, there's been some innuendos here, so I want to be very clear.
The board members who have been here through it and existed from one election to another.
I provide them in my superintendent's report that goes to the ESU. And I don't know if everyone always reads them and they say they can't open things and stuff of that nature, but it, it was provided and I'll be happy to. To continue to provide it, um, because um, we have to put it together for the state anyway, so.
Or throw a copy of it in the shared Google docs. So that we can access it as we need to. And then instead of streaming through other things, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not. Downgrading your report or anything. I'm simply saying, so people stop asking. And then we, then we're clear what money's left, what money has been reallocated for, say, the HVAC because it's high, much higher than what's originally intended. And then we know we need a bond or we don't need a bond, one or the other. I think that's important.
I'm sorry, Joe?
This declaration of official intent is not asking, it's not approval for the two million dollar bond. It's just a protection in case something comes up and we have to. If Mike meets with Andy and says, Andy, listen, I was just told that it's gonna be. Six month lead time to order the roofing material. Should I do it now? It just protects us so that. It can, we can give ourselves money back.
So are you calling a question?
I am calling the question. I know it's small, against small rules, but um, I, I. I'm in favor of signing the declaration of official intent as long as it's not holding us.
And I've moved, I moved to table the, the question until the next meeting.
I think I already made a motion previously. It's like, so moved. I did. So it's there.
Your motion?
I, I, my, my motion was to, um, my motion was to adopt the declaration of official intent. And we can, we can take, we can vote it down if that's what you want. And I don't see, I don't see any harm. We can reissue one when we actually.
You can move to table.
So yes, that's reiterate. Don't need a second, right? Small boards.
Don't. And I moved to table it, so you have a table.
Well, you have to go through the first one first. We have to what? Vote on the table? Okay.
I, it's just that that way I can look at. Andy has said that, that he. Has put out that information and I've told him repeatedly, I can't always open his and maybe that's my fault that I can't always open it. Because I have not seen it and having been on the Esser committee, it, it bothers me. I'd like to see that before.
So I, I have a question. So Deb had a motion to, and you guys have been on as boards way longer than I have. But you made a motion to adopt.
Yeah, she's saying.
You made an order, say.
Table.
Table. You haven't voted, you haven't taken any stuff. You can, you can insert another one and I moved to table.
So tabling uh, supersedes the adoption?
Yeah, okay, if that indeed, which is kind of looked up in Robert's rules of order right now for small boards. That's the case, then we go around and just say, just go around and say. Yes, table, no table.
Okay. You know what? Let's do that. Let's uh, let's vote on Priscilla's motion to table. Uh, David?
Yes, I support the motion. Priscilla?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
No.
What?
No.
You?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Are you first official? Congratulations. Deb?
No, don't table.
Okay, so, uh, I have one, two, three, four, five, six no's and three yeses. So motion does not pass. Okay, uh, up next, we have the Deb's motion, which was to adopt the declaration, uh, of an intent. Deb, how do you vote?
I.
Yes. Jamie?
To adopt the, uh, no.
Good. Hi.
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Priscilla?
No.
David?
I am abstaining.
Okay, so it looks like that motion passes. We are going to adopt the declaration of official intent.
Is that the one everybody signs?
No, just, again, I just, just knee-hung.
Good. So glad you came back.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, up next we have eight C, which is ratification of votes. Did everyone have time to read all of the votes that we, uh, looked over? Uh, Nicole did a nice job of going back to March, I thought, and, uh, everything that was voted on, she put as, uh. PDF in minutes.
Jason, you have a written copy, but I haven't seen. I think Andy does, but you know.
Yeah, Mike?
Is it the formatting that's the problem for you? You're not getting these documents. They're kind of worth of.
They were sent out later than what I, not spent by.
Okay, so, uh, I scanned through those quickly and it just basically went back through and. Like I said, everything that we voted on, the minutes, uh, she provided the minutes, so, um. I'm prepared. If somebody would like to move a question. David?
Okay, um, I'm going to, uh, offer a motion that we ratify the votes. Um, as more particularly described in the documents that Priscilla has in hand right now.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to ratify the votes that Priscilla has in her hand right now. David, how do you vote? I vote yes.
Go back around.
Rob?
Yes.
Thank you. Darcy?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
June?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
David?
I am abstaining.
Abstained.
Uh, all right, so I'm gonna put you down as an abstain also, okay? Motion, motion passed. Six, six, yes, three abstain. All right, moving along. All right. AD, principals reports. Well, Kelly, before you go, I just wanted, uh, state that I think that you did a fabulous job with your, um. Your principals reports. Uh, I'm bummed that you weren't able to present them and, uh, you know, I, 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 you know, I. This board, I can only speak for myself, but I've been craving details and measurables and, uh, you know, specifics and, uh, thank you for that. So fire away.
Yeah, so I think we were gonna open with June's questions, correct?
I second Jason's because this was very informative. Um, and that's something that I've been craving too as well. Um, I just have, um, a question basically around, um, driver's ed. So we haven't been, we've had it advertised since May.
I think even before May.
Okay.
I refreshed the posting.
No one has applied. And you have found in two different locations, you've found a spot, one for ten kids, one for six kids?
Yes.
So sixteen kids are all we're gonna be able to accommodate for one semester.
At the start of the year, I would say in addition to that, um. Some families have found, uh, private vendors, um, private providers. You can, you do have a spot. Either hybrid or a person or something like that. And so in working with the AOE, we can provide a voucher to cover the cost of that. So I think there's, um, at the moment, we have the six BTVLC spots filled for fall and the six filled for spring. I hope to expand spring if there are seats still available on BTVLC. My barrier there is I didn't have a driving instructor to provide those six hours of driving instruction. I do, the person we're working with now is open to exploring adding additional. Um, I'm also, uh, had started a conversation with our outgoing driver's ed instructor to see if he'd be open to doing that some evenings and weekends and. Um, he understandably wanted to get his feet on the ground in his new role, but might be open to taking on some students as well. So we might be able to expand the TVLC. Uh, moving forward, but at the moment, we have those twelve filled for the year. Um, and then we've got, I think, five students, I said this morning, interested in the hybrid, um. Uh, Yankee Driving School option out of East Dorset. Um, and again, we've got another, I think, three or four that are interested in that private voucher option. So that's where I'm at now.
So with only being able to service sixteen kids a semester, we were doing twenty-six a semester?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five a semester? Um, do you know how many kids are on that waiting list?
I do. Yeah, I think as of this morning, there were around fifty-eight. Um. What, in working with the AOE, they've given really clear guidance. We have to give priority to seniors and then juniors to kind of make our way down. And so I think at this moment, all the seniors who are seeking support have, are in the program. And or have identified, at least that we've heard from. I think there's maybe one that we haven't heard from and it may be that some of, I know some students aren't. Were on there and then are kind of like, hmm, I'm gonna wait, right? It's not a priority for me right now. So there's a lot of kind of, I would say, flex and less, but I would say there's around fifty students coming into the year who had expressed interest in driver's ed. So even coming into the year, we weren't going to be able to meet that demand, um, based on our current structure, even if we had hired a full-time instructor, so.
So are you looking at a possibility of a summer to make up for the extra kids that we can't accommodate during the school year?
Looking ahead to next year, yeah.
Yeah, because, uh, uh, it's a safety issue.
Yep.
Basically, I mean, we're trying to teach our kids and, and Mr. Triviani did a wonderful job. And, um, teaching them how to be respectful and how to drive and, um, and so. Um, it really becomes a safety issue, um, and, and, um, so. Um, you're going to be providing vouchers if someone can find some, an outside source?
Okay.
All right, um, and the other thing, um, is. I think you might have addressed this, but I'm not sure. Um. Where, oh, I think we did it in executive session, um, never mind. Um. And I guess that's it for me.
Did you have some any other questions, Kelly?
Is that report on the website? Cause I'm trying to look it for. I can't find it because I don't have it.
Probably prior to you guys, uh, coming on, we can, I'm sure we can send it out to you guys. It was, uh, it was like, uh, so, so Kelly did something different this time. She gave it to us, uh, a few days before the meetings. We actually looked it over instead of five minutes before.
You mentioned that.
I did not.
And I, and I appreciate it. Um, I just want to, you have more material to read.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Kelly. Um, all right, new business discussion, appointments, resignation, executive session. So did we put the executive session? Here or is it number ten executive session?
Number ten on that.
Sure, Dave.
I, I think, Jason, that Deb had covered the fact that we will need two executive sessions.
So I want to make sure.
One, one for, um, the student matter and, uh, one for this one. I believe that we need to have a presentation from, uh, the principal. On the proposed staffing before we even can get into executive session and discuss individuals.
Okay, so, uh, uh, clear that up for me for the people on Zoom. We're gonna talk about staffing real quick and then maybe go into executive session. Is that what I'm hearing?
Believe that.
Then come out and then go back in there later.
I believe that would be the proper order of events.
Good, thank you.
Would you put that, but wouldn't that actually wind up being, I mean, wouldn't you do expenditure of capital plus the ATZ upgrade and the policies? After the first executive session?
Yep.
We gotta leave those.
So we're gonna go in, maybe, come out, go back in. Sounds good. All right, so I believe on Kelly's back up. Meetings, uh, for staffing first? Is that what I'm hearing, David?
So present the proposal without getting into the specifics of the candidate.
I think that you need, this board, I believe, Kelly, needs to have an understanding of why you. Feel that you need to have a both and assistant principal and a dean of students. That was unclear the last time we met. And we need to gain an understanding of that, uh, before we can really start discussing, um, the candidates themselves, which is. Executive session.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to kind of summarize how it, the proposal came to be and Andy, please chime in and certainly if you have questions, please stop me. Um, originally, we had posted the assistant principal to replace Jenny McKay. Um, and I think as I reviewed in a prior meeting, um, I had intended to, given where we were in the hiring season. Kind of keep a very close tab on incoming applications. Um, and if, if needed, if I felt like there was a limited pool, um, to also post, do a parallel posting for a dean of students. Um, the thought process there was that, um, a dean of students role could attract perhaps folks from the private, you know, private secondary realm. Um, and someone who didn't yet have or would be required to have, uh, uh, admin licensure. So I was just trying to create the broadest possible pool of the most talented possible candidates, especially given how late we were in the season. So that's where that original thought process came to be. Um, and so from there, we, um, identified with break committee. We interviewed, um, three assistant principal candidates and one dean of student candidate. Um, and at the outcome of that conversation, we were really fortunate to have had a really outstanding assistant principal candidate. And an outstanding dean of students candidate. Um, and in the conversation that we had as a committee, um. One of the things that kind of came up is like, it would be really great to have that extra capacity. And from there, um, I had spoke about my role in the district as past year, serving as a title nine and equity coordinator for the district. But also part of that role, at least half, if not more, was intended to be anchored at the high school and serving in support of administration. Specifically around the restorative practices piece. And I think, you know, everyone going into the creation of that role and coming into the year had really good intentions. I don't think anyone really understood the depth of need, uh, specifically within that title nine realm. And so my role over the past year really got sucked into that title nine for the district in particular. And so my ability to honor those pieces of building these restorative practices, um, and infusing that within the policies and operations of the school. Something had to give and that ultimately is what gave. And so in thinking a bit more about that reality, I had gone back to Andy to say, hey. Where's my role at, right? Like where's the money from, from my old role? And can I have that for the high school? Um, and, and so that money for my prior role, uh, was coming from Esser. My understanding and, and comparing with Andy is that is extended. We have that money through fiscal year twenty-four. Um, prior to my accepting the principal role, I worked with Shelley Wilson, our district MTSS coordinator. Uh, and noted grant through the AOE and as part of that grant, we did receive as a district about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And as part of that grant, we had written in to extend the equity coordinator role through fiscal year twenty-five. So I was privy to all those pieces. Uh, so yeah, so I was like, hmm, I'm gonna make a pitch to Andy, right? Is that can we, could we as a high school, um, use those funds that we secured through Esser and through that AOE grant? To actually build out the role that I was always intended to do here at the high school. Um, and with Andy's blessing, he said yes. So I, I kind of retweet that dean of students, students role, which is posted. Um, to include that, uh, uh, equity coordinator piece specifically to address, I think, needed bandwidth, in my opinion. Here in the building to, um, support hazing, harassment and bullying, not just cases as they come up. But to actually try and get ahead, right? To actually look at the data. Um, there's pretty clear trends about what's coming through, about where the harms are happening, the types of harms that are happening. Um, and to really leverage this role to try and do a lot more prevention education. Um, I think the other thing that, uh, you know, not laying blame anywhere, but I think is a looming reality is that the title nine, the federal law is gonna change. We're expecting those proposed changes in, in October. Um, and with that, a lot of the types of harms that happened under HHB. Um, are gonna now fall under title nine and it's gonna place a very significant and increased demand on schools across the country. To respond and even more, I would say, taxing ways. And so, uh, I'm just kind of looking ahead at what I know. Uh, just even within that realm of restorative practices meets in the building, the HHB, the title nine, and like we really need. Um, more bandwidth around investigations and prevention education in particular. And I think those pieces really align well with how public education has defined that dean of students role in particular. And so that is really, I think, what underscores my, my pitch to Andy, which he was in support of. And so, um, I'm asking the board, um, to, to support, um, that. Are receiving that gift basically from the ESU to have that expanded capacity for two years, two more years.
David, okay. I'm gonna put my marker down here. And it is this. I think you made a good argument for why you believe we need the two positions. I personally would have favored merging them, but you have made a strong enough argument. Why there's more work there than one person can equitably handle. My concern, and it's a concern I have about an awful lot of programming that we've picked up through Esser. Is it's through Esser and that's gonna run out and it's not free money anymore. And I guess that what I'm gonna tell you, Kelly, is my support will be contingent. A clear understanding that to continue this beyond Esser. That the funding is going to be found when we develop our school year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which I believe will begin this fall. In other words, what I am saying to you is no new money to support these positions. And under those circumstances, I am certainly willing to give due consideration to the proposal which this made.
I think one thing, if I may add, um, and I really hope we can hold space to discuss this in an upcoming meeting, um, but we're also kind of, um. We're just getting a lot of our climate survey data back, both from Canarima, um, and through the Greater Falls connections. Pieces that were done last year, which has got our youth risk behavior, YRBS data back from the feds, right? Which is two years out, but. I would say that in looking at those three data sources, there's. A very clear and very, um, I would say pressing need to do some very meaningful climate work, that there is a. Uh, I would say a significant percentage and significant groups of students in this building who are struggling in a very persistent and routine way. And feeling safe and accepted, um, coming into the buildings. When we look at our truancy rates. Which I think have remained, remained chronically high in comparison to elsewhere in the state. When we looked at our graduation rates, you know, there's a lot of indicators that aren't great and I think with this, these new data sources coming in. I think it's helping to shed some light as to why some of these indicators aren't that great. Um. And so I really see this added bandwidth is really, especially in that equity coordinator lens, is really helping us. Unpack that and, and, and actually take some meaningful action to get ahead of it. Because I think, again, when you look back at some of these data sources, this has remained true for a while, many, many years now. And it, it has to be better, so.
So.
Um, yeah, can I, can you explain to me why this isn't part of, you know, it's being the guidance department rather? And why you're advocating for a dean, like some new dean of students instead of. And, um, working through the guidance department and working with people who are there to utilize this.
I think one of the intended shifts that would happen with this creation of this role is, and this has been a very, I would say, clear request coming from the counseling department in particular is. You know, we have a growing demand on our five oh four and IEPs, but those five oh four case management, I think historically were held. By administration in this building and I think over the years, I can't speak to the why, that really shifted over to counseling. Um, and they have been very clear and asked since the beginning of the year, but this past year, that. Somewhere there'd be bandwidth created in the system that that five oh four case management could be taken on either back through to administration. So as part of this proposal, I would look to see those five, that five oh four case management brought back to, um, the dean of students, the AP and myself. To allow the counseling department more time to kind of get at these, or some, you know, the flexible pathways. We're looking at a potential schedule review. You know, there's a lot of academic specific pieces. And I would say in addition to that, there's a lot of, um. You know, uh, our, a lot of our students are really struggling with a lot of pieces, right? And I think the demands, um, that. That has been being placed on counseling's time to support those students and families and accessing. Resources, just basic housing security, food security, clothing, right? That's only going up as well. And so. I think my hope is that this this model, this proposal will create more bandwidth for them to do. That kind of, that really important work that's very clearly needed, so.
Question is, you are now laboring your. Yes, dean of students and putting your five oh four there.
We'd be pulling five oh four over to the dean of students, the AP.
And not leaving it in.
So creating some more bandwidth within the council team. And I would say there's precedent for that model, and I think that aligns with. How a lot of other schools do it as well. So it's really just kind of. Providing some important acknowledgement to their needs as well, the council teams. I keep pointing over there, the council team. Council over there.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to sort of kick to you off, I believe I was saying. You know, you were saying that. In two years, you know, maybe maybe this position wouldn't be available because of the ASR funds being over. That kind of what you were saying.
That's gonna be done in the fall of twenty four. Is that correct, Andy?
That's correct.
So after the fall of twenty four, it's on us.
Twenty five, yeah, grant for twenty five. So what I want to. Pair this too is, we were talking about making changes for our tech students and. Having different. Curriculum ideas for that. Can I get credit for this and that? Because there needs to be change. There also is going to be change. There also needs to be change for the social support for our kids. I don't want to put. You can, I'm not going to put, like, this is done at twenty twenty five because. There is a new need. There's need for these kids.
I'm in agreement with you, Darcy.
With this position, I'm just comparing it to the tech, like, there's change here and there's change here. And so. I'm not going against what you're saying. I just don't think we can be like, oop.
Darcy, we have complete agreement about the need. My only reservation is how we're gonna fund it.
I understand. We'll find a way.
I want to ask a question. So my question is. You said attendance, were you talking? Were you got, so with the dean of students, is that gonna help you attendance for kids or staff?
Students.
Okay.
So a dean of students role, they do not carry admin licensure and therefore they do not supervise. Staff, they don't have any supervision responsibilities. It's specific to supporting students. These aren't a support that the adults and the staff in the building, but their primary focus is on.
But they, that person could help. That person can help. Those other things so that you could focus on. So one thing that we talked about quite a bit is the evaluation part of the staff. And the accountability part of the staff. Then, you know, I think you touched on it as far as. The, what the graduation numbers were compared to how many students we had. So that in turn might help you to really. Run the X's and O's of the building, basically, and and oversee the whole building instead of. You know, kind of putting out fires and and correct me if I'm wrong, but if that person is. Helping, it's gonna take some pressure off guidance also so that they can focus on their job. So what's the catch?
I think the catch is, I think, goes back to David's base, right, is that. And I don't know that I would define it that way necessarily, but I think it's, you know, it's a two-year, you know, it is grant funded. Temporary, but I think a critical support.
Did you also say that? So that would also, so your. Your role was Title IX, but there was a. A pay for that, so that technically wouldn't be here. So the dean of students. And the vice principal would technically kind of oversee that now. Is that correct?
So I think a proposal, and this is always, even if I had remained in my equity in Title IX coordinator role. I was building towards a vision where the Title IX pieces would be more distributed across the buildings in the district. Once folks were trained up and and felt more confident in being able to operationalize a really complex. Piece, right? And so I, in my opinion, again, it's not up to me anymore, but in my opinion, I would still advocate for people to move to that model. Which would mean I would still serve as like the building base. Title IX coordinator, right? But I would be able to work with our AP and the dean of students, right, to do. More of the investigations in-house, a lot of the informal resolutions in-house, things like that. We would have our own. Well-trained team to support that need and whatever need kind of manifests as a result of a legal change.
You know, and a side effect might be, you know, now that you're doing more of those kind of oversight from a ten thousand foot. Evaluation, you might be able to, you know, hey, maybe we need staff here, maybe we don't need it here, like.
If I, if I may just speak to what Priscilla was asking about why not expanding counseling. The rules are very different and there's a lot of conflict of interest between what. What a school administrator or subadministrator might address and deal with that a school counselor. Addresses and deals with. In other, some of our other buildings, we have found there's been. An enormous conflict when the school counselor has been responsible for investigation of hazing harassment and bullying. That the the work that needs to be done there is in direct conflict from what a school counselor is is supposed to be doing. So that is why the two are separate. They're not in in involved. As Kelly mentioned. We've slated to have a restorative practice equity person here in the building through ESSER funds. And continued on with, and the title of the grant went right out of my head. Stronger connection grant for next year. So we will continue to have that. I guess whether the person's a dean of students or not, I mean, that's. You know. It's, it's really, we're, we're trying to support the high school and the needs that the high school has. There will definitely be, have to be a discussion. We added a dean of students at the middle school for some of the very same reasons. That person coming on fully aware that it is a one-year grant funded position. And it's up to the principal that to make a case if they can find a way, just David, as you said it. If they can find a way to build it into their budget, then that's on that principal to try and do that. Or do we find additional grant funds in the future? So it's, you know. I can talk in executive session about some other pieces, but.
I just have one question. Somebody just said though, is there gonna be a restorative practices person here as well as?
We're trying to combine it all together.
It's okay, no, he, he, that's all, it's okay.
Yeah, I think to Andy's point about having a similar model in the middle school, I would love to see more of a connection. Between the, between the two schools so that there's a consistency moving forward so that. When our students get into ninth grade, they have that foundational support. So that's less, not necessarily less that we're working with, but there, there's a, there's a, there's a consistency. In how things are managed in hand. And so I would claim fully in support of that our kids, that social and emotional learning is. Very much needed.
We just had that conversation before the meeting here with someone with freshman academy. So we just had that same conversation.
The touch points need to get strong.
Uh, yeah, just for clarification, it's funded, this position would be funded for this school year. And next school year. Yes, it would be. Three years out, three school years out that we would have to figure out, or Kelly would have to figure out how to fund it. Okay, thank you.
Would somebody like to move their question to go on to our executive session? Do you have a question first?
Yep, uh, nope.
Go ahead, fire away, thank you.
That would be item number two, if you're looking at your cards. The appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. But the public body must make a final decision to hire or appoint in an open meeting, and it must explain the reasons for its final decision. One VSA, three one three eight three. That's the motion. You know, we need the one. There's some explanations on the back that need to.
So we're going to take a roll call the.
Yeah, do you need to?
Yes.
Oh, all right, but I believe, no.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Aw, damn.
Well.
You have to move that. We're gonna come back to that. That's what I was, that's what they said. So it's a dead of, yeah. So we're gonna be doing that at the end. We never get. Besides a cap thing that two hours, come on, man. Can be done in the same. Executive session because it covers that we're going into now, yeah. So when you're ready, just point them to. Too long in the chair. Get far away. Get far away. Get far away.
Yeah, this meeting is gonna go three hours long.
Yeah.
Ridiculous.
I mean, yeah, all that stuff over onto this side.
Oh, yeah?
With that half of carpet.
Oh, my gosh.
The whole thing's going for you.
Okay.
This is your trying to make something up.
That's okay.
Both the absolute most popular tools out there, just call it stable of every tractor, you see them all the time, all over the place, most of you out there probably own. Or if you're keeping track and get set up, you're probably thinking about buying one. Now, a lot of these people like to split them or as well, but we're gonna be using a brush on, if you take the example. This is gonna be an extreme set of circumstances, right? We are number one, we're close to an area where I have kind of tractors done before, that's not too surprising, it's off the channel. But this area is very lucky and I mowed the perimeter of the trees, leave them there in a real drought. Uh, so, but we've recently, last few weeks, we've had a lot of rain and so. I really want to know, I, I mowed this area and I, I filled up a little bit, I, I planted some. Screening cover around the perimeter and I hope that takes off, it hasn't terminated yet, but uh, it should be popping up anytime now, it's gonna be. And in the middle of this area, I wanna clear this out. And I'm gonna end up broadcasting. See it, you know, for food plot, a little, a little food plot, uh, for June as well, closer. Maybe Nebraska, the buck week, a little bit of ride path, we'll see, uh. It's gonna depend on how everything goes, and forget it's a very unique area. I'm not gonna be able to tell you what it is, but I need to get all of this weed covered knocked down and killed off. I want to take you through some tips to successfully use your brush on, um, effectively and safely, alright? There's gonna be a lot of different ways, a lot of different variables that can work to your advantage or work against you if you're doing it the wrong way. So let's talk about cut height first of all, and in today's example, again, this is. The very tall, thick, wet material, and it's not that you can't tackle the material. But it's gonna require a different mindset going into it where. If you're, uh, just an open drive deal that you mowed once or twice already this year, you can probably cut this at a lower height and at a faster speed. Than you would in this example here, so let your circumstances dictate how you're gonna vote. In this case, I'm probably gonna vote a little bit higher and you can vote even a foot higher or taller if you need to, and make a second pass. Kinda get that, that initial cut down and then take the secondary pass to really chop up everything and get to the height that you want. Now, there's two angles, a forward and a rear spinning angle that you can do with your brush on, if you want to. Get the most fuel efficient cut, um, take the least amount of horsepower, that what you're gonna typically do is pull the front end. Okay, that leading end of your brush on, a little bit lower, about an inch lower, give or take. Uh, compared to the rear side, that rear char side of the back is gonna be about an inch higher, so out of left side to that, if you want to. At the front side a little bit higher, an inch higher, and the back an inch lower, what that's gonna do is allow that debris to cut. Multiple times in there, so you're gonna get a finer chop, probably a little bit more easily, this first material blow out there as well, kind of a little bit of a big blow, say the end of the tree and a flop. Well, then you wanna make sure to avoid not to cut too low, this is not a finish lower, it's not a flail lower, brush on. Don't take it slow with cutting too low, alright, you're gonna have two, uh, debris that gets floored up in there and really falls down the mower first of all. But also you're gonna be prone to scalping, and scalping's bad for a variety of reasons, number one, if you're hitting the ground. Uh, three, well, then you're gonna be killing your blade block quicker, two, you're a lot more likely to catch things like, you know, rocks or. Uh, branches, things that are laying on the ground and maybe other hidden metal debris, we showed. Showed you a couple pictures recently of a guy that brush on and, and swung, uh, a hunk of steel and flatted out, whacked a roll bar or a, a brush guard or something on his. On his UTV and. If you're scalping the ground a lot, you're getting more prone to doing that. On top of that, it's not just the drive line, it's your body, home, home, the ball, they have those jar stops when they're whacking the ground. Now, just because you have a five foot or a six foot or a seven foot pole, it does not mean that you need to use that whole width, alright? Sometimes it's gonna be too much for your tractor, you know, you try to get the attachment that's gonna handle. Almost all of this area of the circumstances you're gonna get into, but sometimes you're just in an extreme situation and they're gonna be pushing the weight a bit you. You're gonna see, so if you have a flat like that or, but it's just super nasty and over today. If you floor, maybe you're gonna take three foot, if you take four foot, okay, you don't take a full width. Just to make it easier on yourself, you're gonna see, it's gonna wind up being more efficient and less precarious to do. If you can stick with dry material. You know, the taller it is, especially if it's the morning or after a rain, and you're gonna have, you have the material down in there, you know, it's hard for the sun to get down and dry things out, it's been. All worked dry, so I do know, this will be, this will be my first day, uh. And you'll really do have a lot of good information, and some are, there's, and I would encourage you. That'd be from a, you were really trying to stand point, check out Rhino Ag's manuals, they're available on their website, they're completely free, they're. They're, you know, you can tell they had a lawyer that's through this, uh, a few times and pulled them through, uh, church fees or whatever, and whatnot, but. It's gonna give you that absolute ton of information, uh, setting up a brush on, uh, uh, how to maintain them in general, uh. Also, safety things that you need to do for, uh, the, the cover itself, the, the tractor, the operator, for people that are around you and everything else, there's just a very thorough manual. Again, completely free sourcing, you can bounce it off of, you know, like a, you do not even. Not just Rhino Ag covers, but any rubbery cover, and a lot of it's gonna be applicable to other tractor attachments as well. Here's the thing worth considering, you're gonna hit it both ways, take your bucket off or leave it on, so. That is gonna be definitely application specific, uh, it's good to have your bucket on there because you do need some counterweight, typically around twenty percent. Of your total tractor weight should be upfront, uh, you need to maintain steering, right? You wanna avoid the bounce of having not enough weight up front, but then also you're gonna steer with your front tires, but you don't have enough weight up there to hold those tires on the ground, you're not gonna be turning very well. Another benefit of having your bucket is if you are in a situation like where today where there's a risk of getting stuck. Using your bucket to get you unstuck can be done, and if you don't have it on there, well, that's just gonna make things worse. The flip side, okay, removing your bucket is gonna make it easier to maneuver, and that's gonna be. Not required for a lot of folks, and we don't really need to worry about. Space restrictions, uh, in the area that we're moving today, but if you are in a tight area, tight quarters. You know, it's extra, oh, I don't know, eighteen inches, two foot that you can knock off of this whole, like, the tractor and make it that much easier. To turn in tight spaces. Now, something that had stuck with me from a few years ago, whatever it was, and I'm, I'm showing a video I did, uh, somebody had mentioned that it's, uh. If I'm not getting enough air. Into my engine compartment because that bucket is blocking and just restricting the airflow and. You know, this thing is going two miles an hour or something, right? So there's, there's not a whole lot of, uh, giraffe that's going out or anything like that, so that's not really a concern that you need to be worried about, although. It is gonna provide some additional protection, right, so if you're in a really shrubby area with a lot of. Uh, thicker material, grab it knocked it down a bit more, step underneath, not protect your grill guards, like you're on that little for four two from, um. Take all that stuff head on and potentially cause damage to like holes in the grill. Plus, speaking of grill, radiator screen, all that kinda thing. And if that's not the season that you're mowing it, but those things can clog up so bad. You gotta pay attention to the temperature gauge on your tractor, you'll see that heat will start to climb and if it gets into the red, then no way, alright, so. Pay attention to that and you're gonna see them flying all around all the time, and certain seasons will think they're pollinating and whatnot, they're gonna be. Worse than other times of the year too, but plan on a little bit of extra time to hop off that tractor. Where you're running it idle, that's gonna help the system cool down, uh, need to hedge your temperature down. With safety on and everything else and then. Use common sense, go around and, and, and knock off all that buildup period that tractor is stuck in, clogging up. That is what is restricting airflow and could potentially manage your tractor's engine and go on jet. Tractors these days will tell you to engage the PTO when you're at idle and then slowly rev it up there, so. Typically, that's gonna be what you wanna do, whereas if you're always saying, I'm telling you, it's different. You're gonna be in low range when you're going, you know, your, your folks, they think they're flying along, but their brush on, so that's just for us to hear the data, they're saying low range, go slow. Be under control, so that you can come to a stop, if you need to. Especially at new land, new areas or, or tall grass areas, you know, both are competent and, and directly so. Land that they've gone for twenty, thirty years or a whole life, whatever it is, there's still areas where there's washout that might pop up time to time after a storm, there're gonna be sinkhole. Terrain changes, nothing stays the same, so circumstances are gonna change all the time, and if you're going too fast. That's when you, you hit that sinkhole, or that's when, you know, a washout happens and you go. Teeter tottering down in it, tip over, we mowed a new property that I had a couple of years ago and ran over a pickaxe, that was very loose up there, fortunately. Uh, didn't go flying anywhere, but we just ran right over it, but there, there's all sorts of stuff that could just. Be hiding down in there that you, maybe you had something on your track that you haul along with you or a UTV. You never could find it, you don't know what happened to it, and it's just lying out there in the field somewhere, and the next time you're out there going, you pick it up and it goes flying somewhere. Typically, you do wanna have your roll bar up and your seatbelt on, again, that's one of those hopefully unlikely scenarios, but. That's why we all wear the seatbelt, and that's why I have my hair to get with, have your roll bar on, seatbelt on, but if you do hit a pothole, if you do. Maybe climb up, maybe it doesn't need to be a, a pothole, there could be a, a scuff or, um, a log, or maybe a thinner block that's tied to the grass, you just don't know about it. Enough that if you can't equal office, and even once I go up, I put, to put the air and it will struggle there and it just happens, the blink of an eye, so there's. Areas like that, know what areas that perform today, but I have never moved before. I'm gonna go low expecting, right, there to be something there. Probably won't be, but there's always a chance. They're proud to respond about Rindgard Solutions, a liquid balance weight, it goes right beside your tires, completely hidden. We're big on safety on this channel, these tractors are just two bladed city right out of the factory, not only is it gonna help with safety, keeping those rear tires flat on the ground. And also loader efficiency and traction too. The benefits of Rindgard include being the heaviest all natural liquid balance weight on the market, it's not gonna corrode your rims like the old Kelsken fluoride, it's not gonna freeze. And it's available at over a thousand dealers nationwide, find the dealer near you at rindgartsolutions.com. Dealing with hills is very dangerous, you know, this could be, uh, just a hillside in your field, this could be a hill going down to your pond, it could be a fish bank along the road. We've mowed all these scenarios, and what you can't, avoid side, like driving sideways along the hill. Always drive up and down, alright, maintain four wheel drive, that's gonna give you operating power to draw back loads as well. And I prefer to back downhill, alright, so if there's a top, if backed down, if you can, drive down then, and that's gonna be, I'll leave that up to you guys on what you wanna do, but the safest operation is. To back down those hills and it makes sense, that's exactly, a lot of, uh, pond for example, but it's gonna allow you to push the climb back up and out if you need to. And the last thing I would probably say is really. If you're something gas tractor, if you're out there brush on in the, in the heat, all come along, man, if you have out, if you're running the. Uh, a hornet's or a log or anything else, if you just get, like, if they need it, you wanna keep the sun off your skin, anything else, a cab, it's just so hard to beat. But if you can't afford a cab, because that is a really nice luxury and not a necessity. Well, maybe look at a cab, I mean, we still have to have one on, this is twenty thirty eight R, we actually just got one in, uh, recently, we gotta throw on here, but. The wide line cabby is. It's nearly indestructible, alright, it's super lightweight, you can take it on and off the trailer or for storage, it's easy to put on. It's gonna keep the sun off you and make it more enjoyable to be out there on your tractor because it is tough, so that's gonna feed down on you on those hot summer days. Okay, so out here is a little tiny secluded pool area and. Again, very lucky, uh, I really need a high profile to get through the area that we have previously mowed and chilled up, because that is. One of my other tracks, though, because we got stuck down in there, the component guys talked about, uh, twenty yards away from us. Well, that's the difference though between having all of the, the grass that's growing here versus nothing, right? That all that grass that's growing, a little bit of that ground, it's firm up a lot, uh, and soaked up a lot of that water, not that it's not still slumped in, you have to be careful, but it just makes a dramatic difference. I had a few comments when we mowed this area previously about how, like, mulled out all the gold rods, all this other, uh, great pollination habits, and everything else, and. That is true, uh, we're, we're mulled out a small portion of that now, but. You can see we're surrounded by it as well, alright, just a small pocket in the middle of our forty acres. And in fact, we're gonna end up planting, oh, I think it's about another four acres or so, a lot of pollinator habitat, maybe a little bit more of that even. Uh, like this law and next spring as well, but we're gonna afford to make up for that, just kind of restructuring and rebuilding all the property a little bit, uh, for our needs too. I decided early on, I've been trying to just take one pass today, uh, as low as I can go, I just wanted to see what would happen with it, and overall, this well, didn't we stop that? Uh, some of the areas there, uh, but overall, it just kinda tackles the vast majority of it. I really come back and then move it out again, uh, but this is gonna be more of an uphill situation. You know, like, uh, in spring, right, and that's a whole thing that a lot of guys don't wanna deal with, that they're talking about these days, but you gotta be able to have. A vision for the thing that you want, you're saying, and not be.
Did we lose people? David, did you string off? A patient man.
Yeah, I know. Gee, you're not the only one. I know. So you have a time for me? Rob this one?
I think you might have run into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something, yeah. Say it the other way.
Wait a minute. Sorry. I like.
Oh, cut it out, stop your whining.
See all you.
Why you get paid to be.
See all you guys nodding off?
In the executive session, careful you say. No, we haven't voted yet. No, no, complaining about James.
You are alive, this one.
Yeah, exactly.
Long ones.
If the lights are not green, are they always on?
The lights, if it's not red, everything's on.
Uh, I thought they had a.
The owl's box up.
No, 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 so you just get, you get the red bar when it's muted, gotcha, I just can't see the mute because, that's okay, you're not.
Wasn't supposed to rain today. But I told him, I wanted to get that shot on the line, I'm like, oh.
Cold hung out of load this morning. Before he went to work. I was gone on him.
Okay, so we're, uh, we're coming out of the executive session, uh, David Park, could I?
Yes, okay, um, I, uh, move Mr. Chair that Mark Ebo, uh, be released. From his, uh, contract as a guidance counselor at E F U H S. Pending the successful hire of replacement.
Good, thank you for that motion, David. Uh, all right, now we're in a roll call, Deb.
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Tony?
Uh, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Darcy?
Sting?
Rob, yes, so, yes, good, motion passes. And I believe we have a, a second motion, Deb, can you make that motion for us, please?
I move that we, that we accept the hire of, the, her name is?
Elizabeth Hamilton.
Elizabeth Hamilton, um, as, oh, Assistant Principal. Okay, did write down.
All right, uh, so we'll call that, David? Yes, Priscilla?
Yes.
Rob, yes, Darcy?
Sting.
Mike, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Tony? Jamie?
Hi.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, welcome aboard both, okay. Up next, uh, item nine B, we have expenditure of capital.
Should be brought back to the board.
Sorry, Cahilla?
Yeah.
Um, nine B, expenditure of capital funds for H V A C upgrade. What is that?
Uh, so we're just, um, wanting to make sure that we have, um, approval that, as I said, the HVAC system is. Panning out to be around five million dollars, um, which we earmarked, um, over three million dollars. Um, and so there is one point five million dollars in capital fund, and we just wanna have the ability to have, um. That access those funds, if we need to access those funds to complete that project.
So that's one point five million, right?
Correct.
Good. So do we need a motion for that?
We need a motion.
Wait, Jamie, go ahead.
Um, I, in some previous notes, there's some discussion about getting some grant funding, I think, from, um, Vermont Efficiency, is that right, or getting some?
So we had looked into that, we're not, um, approved for that.
Yep, thank you.
Great question. Joe?
I, I make the motion to, um, you, to have access to the.
Capital.
Capital reserve of one point.
Up to.
Up to one point five million dollars. To be put towards the HVAC system if we need it.
Good, is there any discussion? Yep.
Was this a set aside, it was, it's not, it's not the general unrestricted fund balance or any of that kinda stuff, I know I'm using the wrong terms for the school system, but. Um, it was already set aside?
We lost Jim, and so, um, I, but my understanding is, yes, it was the, it's already set aside for capital improvements.
Okay, I think she said that last, in the last meeting.
Yeah, right, so.
So, clarify for me, please, I thought that we were putting in. The additional under Esser for that funding, and that's why we couldn't get, we didn't have money left for other projects. And now you're telling me we're gonna take it out of our capital funds, I'm just not sure on this.
So. When it was asked that we earmarked money for the HVAC system, it was originally, um. Told to us from M and E, um, who Mr. Brody, that it was a one point eight million dollar project. It's now being, um, the numbers that are being counted around are around five million dollars. And so, we set aside originally the one point eight million dollars. Then we set aside an additional funding to try and get as close as we could to that without. Spending all of the money on just one building, and so, um, that additional need of, you know, of a cushion is that this project comes in at five million dollars. We don't have Esser funds to cover the five million dollars. So, I, I mean, and, and so, when it was, when it was brought, it was brought to this board a while ago, it was, it was discussed. About accessing the capital reserve funds for that, there was no motion taken or, you know, official knowledge, but. Or official vote, but we had discussed it, um, in previous meetings, I don't remember exactly when, but I know Jim had spoken about it, and I know Steve had spoken about it, so, um. So that, that's the reason why we're, we're, and part of when we go for project approval. We have to show that the, the board is supporting that, we can't, that'll hold it up, if we have to come back now and ask for another one, so we're just trying to have this available for us. So that we can put it all up at once and get it all approved in one sweep, as opposed to multiple steps.
Thank you.
Good.
So as far as the HVAC, um. System, uh, it's, was my understanding that the increased funds were because we were going to put some. Additional air conditioning in, and my recommendation is, I would rather do it right the first time than. Piecemeal stuff together, I mean, the middle school spent a ton of money on their renovations. And they rent air conditioners for all their, for the, for multiple classrooms. At an ungodly amount of money a month. And it's just, in my opinion, if we're gonna do something, do it right the first time and not have to piecemeal stuff together. And when it comes to learning, if you're in an environment that's eighty degrees or hotter, you're not gonna learn anything.
It's warming here right now, and it's. David?
So.
Okay, thank you, uh, I am gonna support the motion. Um, however, I need to reiterate something that, that Deb said earlier tonight, and that is that we need to see the schedule. Of the allocation of Esser funds, um, across the entire district so that we have a clear understanding of. Where we fit into this equation.
Darcy, could I ask that you, uh, note that for our next, uh, meeting agenda item, that, a checklist of some sorts of, uh, what, uh, what David just said? Uh, go ahead, Deb.
So my understanding is you've already hired a clerk of the work, yes?
You're a project manager.
Okay, well, okay, is it a project manager or clerk of the work?
Project manager.
Okay, did you hire a director of construction?
We hired a construction management company.
Construction, so that's two separate, okay.
Yes.
Two separate, so we already paying them out of Esser money?
We, we, we haven't paid the construction management company yet, and.
Here you put, the, um, well.
Project manager, yes.
Project manager being paid out of the Esser funds.
Yes.
At this point, so we're eating a down road. Wait to get there, so, okay, what happens if it actually hits five mil, and we only have four point five million available? That's what, basically, when you just told us, the combined.
Correct, and, and, and that's, that's, we're working with the construction management company, that this is all we have available to spend. And so five million is, is what I've been told is the, on the high end.
On the high.
So I'm working backwards from that five million, because I don't have it.
And, and I know what construction is like, having to go in my house, change orders happen all the time, they add to the budget. What you want to go to, so, okay, so those, construction price, prices can go up too.
Much of this is actually an equipment price and supply. I think there was a motion on the floor, um, so, you made the motion yet?
I did.
Can you reset the motion for us, please?
Okay, someone, uh, I make the motion to accept.
Extend.
To expend one, up to one point five million dollars of our capital reserve fund. If needed for the HVAC system.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Deb, Ebo.
I'm going with Sting.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Tony?
I'm gonna do it.
Good. Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Darcy?
Sting.
Rob, yes. Priscilla?
I'm thinking.
David? Yes. All right, so I'm gonna put you down as a stain.
Stain.
Stain, all right, so I have four stains and five, yes, is motion passed. All to Sam, thank you. All right, up next, nine C, we have policies, Priscilla, would you like to review the policy that we need to pick outside?
Yeah, we, we have, you should have gotten, they sent to you, um, these policies are, uh, F three and F four are required. Uh, there are new policies that were put out, the, um, federal government has changed their requirements, and we are supposed to have these in effect. By August first, that's why it was important that we do them and, and get them in there. Um, the first was fire and emergency preparedness drills. It, um, talks about the option based response and how to notify parents and all of that. This is, it, Andy has told us it's exactly what our schools are already valuing, but now we're required to have it in a policy. The access control and visitor management is another one, the same kinda thing, we are doing that. And we linked security cameras to that, which is F twenty six, because we are putting in security cameras at the, at the entrance of all our buildings. We already have had those here at the high school for quite a while, but we are doing that at all the other buildings in our S U as well, so. Um, pretty straightforward, specifies the usage, and there are also, in addition to the policy, there are procedures that all the schools have to do, that those are under administrative control. And what the administration has to do to, um, follow through on, on the policies.
Thank you, Priscilla, I, again, I really appreciate the amount of effort it takes to do all these policies, and it's not easy, and, um, you know, I, you know, we. It's definitely needed, and again, thank you for your effort, appreciate it, did you wanna make a motion on this?
Oh, yeah, I make a motion that we approve F three fire and emergency preparedness drills, F four access control and visitor management, and F twenty six security. Cameras policies for.
Right.
High school.
Any discussion? Seeing none, David? Yes, so, Rob, yes, Darcy?
Sting.
Mike, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Tony?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, thank you, moving on. Up next, uh, it's like we're, uh, about executive session for a student matter, David, could you make that motion for us, please?
Yes, sir, uh, pull that out again. Um, will possibly need some help with, with Deb with this.
I've been looking at these, I'm not exactly sure your, the purpose.
Um, it's the purpose of, uh, well, I'll, I'll make the motion, and Deb possibly can amend it, right? Um, um, I knew that we enter it into executive sessions to discuss a student matter involving staff members. It was a student matter, and staff is, um, a consideration here, and I think that that covers as much disclosure. As, uh, is prudently publicly allowable.
The general.
Good, yes.
We're general, and I would say, yeah, that finding, to find that premature general public knowledge of.
Okay.
Student matters would clearly place the student or the school board at a substantial disadvantage. Right.
Right, that was. We have a motion on the floor, David, I did vote on your motion. Yes.
Yeah.
Rob, yes.
Sting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Tony?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes. Here we go again.
Is that on the mute button?
I think I should be able to.
Credit?
Is Mike first around the mute button?
It is.
Down in the left hand corner.
Oh, um, no. Can I understand it?
No, can you slide this, can you push the corner? Towards me?
Oh, oh, this, oh, so he can see it. I can get my maybe head out of the way.
Then I can just.
Now you're close.
Yep, good.
You are back.
I mean, these people are so.
Okay, we're coming out of the executive session and uh no action is being taken. Okay, uh, up next, we have a director's comments, Mr. Clark.
I have no comments tonight, except I take note of the facts, we'll be lucky to get out of here by today.
Priscilla.
Okay, yes, just, uh, I appreciate all of you, you are just. Wonderful at hanging in there, just keep that consideration and kindness going.
Thank you, Priscilla. Rob?
Yeah, I'd like to thank our speakers for, you know, it's always good to be educated from people in our community, and thank Mike for putting this together, it's a lot of work. Uh, but I think doing this twice, you know, having the second meeting a month, even though. It's late, um, I think it helps helps us be educated so we can make good decisions going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Darcy?
Um, I don't have anything, just, thanks for everyone for being here.
You too, Darcy.
Yeah, uh, I want to thank our speakers tonight, uh, I thought, uh. Um, Andrew did an excellent job in terms of speaking up for himself and what his needs are. And with young people like that in the school, I think we can really make some headway in terms of getting them what they need as students. Um, so I'm really encouraged, uh, Scott Far, you know, rock star when it comes to C T E. Um, thank you, David, for introducing him to me, um, I'm just very thrilled, our next. Uh, listening session will be August twenty eighth, so stay tuned and we're gonna keep the ball rolling.
Thank you, Mike. Jim?
Well said, thank you.
Time.
Um, thanks, I'm getting up to speed as quick as I can, I'll try not to abstain from too many more votes, I'm trying to read as much as I can, so look at that.
Thank you, David. Steph?
Um, the only thing I have came from the last meeting is. Um, the numbers that we received, that seventy five, the class graduating class is seventy five, I'm sorry. Senior class is seventy five, but only fifty two or fifty three graduated, which is almost a third of our students did not graduate. I think it's important that that the that the board is informed, what is going on that's causing these things, um. What I'm asking for is something, we'll get brought up at a future meeting, um, would be a a breakdown. Of what the reasons are that we that that many students did not attend, that not attend graduation, could not graduate. Um, miss credits, illness, moving away, I mean, I don't know, there's a number of things that I'm not even thinking of right now. Um, to understand, because I'm, that's sad, I mean, I'm from a graduating class of six hundred. In my school, enforcement, the Hampshire, um, so to think of a graduating cl- uh, senior class, it's only seventy five. Or even if I multiply that by four, there's only three hundred students in this school, seems. Ridiculously low to me, and I don't know whether our numbers are trending up or trending down for students, I know that a lot of transitional. People who move from apartment to apartment and leave the community and come back and so on and so forth, have all kinds of fluctuations. But I think it's important that we know that, because that knowledge will give us the power to address those things as it comes to us from the administration. On how to deal with those things, whether they're financial or just policy changes, whatever it has to be. Um, we need to know why, because I was very happy to see all the pictures of graduation in the paper, but I was very discouraged to hear the numbers. And um, and so I think it's 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 on us to know why we informed. About what we need to do, or what we think administration is thinking. Whatever that is, um, again, I'm very, very happy with the speakers, first time I've been here for one of those, and I think it's about time. Um, that we came to terms, whatever we have to do to do that, because I know a lot of us are book learning people, and that's. How we graduated and got to college and so on and so forth, but the reality is, we have to combine the worlds of tech. And regular standard education, because you don't know where the next Einstein is going to come from, could be at a workshop instead of a textbook. Because techno technological work, um, working, building a shed or whatever you're doing. That's abs- that's taking the abstract into the real world, and that from that. One can come up with a lot of things that will tend send them to college and get a further education to become. Like I said, in a sense Einstein, we don't know that, but it's time for us to stop looking down on tech as a way. For children to grad- students to graduate who are not willing to go to college, it has to be as simply an alternative reality. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Steph, um, I'm sure we can put that on the next uh, meeting agenda with the. Graduation.
Yep.
For.
Got it.
Um, so I just want to uh, thank, you know, the. The individuals that showed up, um, you know, I think it really supports the vision that we want. The portrait of the graduate to look like, and you know, the direction we're going going in. And what does, what are new accountability standards are going to be. Um, and I think that's great hearing from them, and it's real world, it's not, you know, we're not getting numbers, it's, you know, that these. People are in the schools and, you know, just are out in the workforce and it's just uh great. Um. I know it's a long meeting, um, I want to thank you all for hanging in, you know, um, I I think out of. You know, since I've been the chair, you know, I would say ninety five percent of us have been in person, and I think it's. Me personally, I think it's so much better to be able to, you know, talk to somebody and not have to worry about, you know, the internet or all that kind of stuff, and. You know, you guys, uh, you know, you all hung in and you're all really classy, great individuals, and I really appreciate.